Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the next item, I'll be sharing information related to the 2020-2021 Return to School Plan and subsequently seeking your approval. And to start with and before we begin that presentation, and a formal recommendation for the 2020-21 school year is made here, I want to share a word of thanks. Thank you to everyone who came out to speak today, as well as to the many people who have provided input and posed thoughtful questions as we have moved through this process. That includes thousands of Henrico County Public Schools families, staff members, community members, and this board as well. As you know, division leaders and I are recommending that we begin the school year using a fully virtual school day for the first nine weeks. And here's the truth. This isn't the recommendation I hope to be making today. I share the same feelings of deep disappointment and frustration that many have shared with me over the past few days and here today about the loss of the spring 2020 school year and the loss of a chance to start school again this fall in the same way that we always have. In mid-June, it appeared that we turned the corner and that the spread of coronavirus would continue to decline. We began our recovery efforts, preparing diligently using VDOE guidelines distributed in June to plan to bring our students back for in-person instruction, researching best practices for safety and risk mitigation, gauging the thoughts of our families and staff, and of course, consulting health experts. All the while, the number of cases across Virginia, though they have fluctuated, have risen to levels higher than in mid-June. Unfortunately, this recent health information has raised concerns among employees and families about whether the mitigation strategies, such as those that were recommended in Virginia's Phase III opening guidelines, provide the level of health and safety assurances that our employees and families need to bring students back for in-person learning. At the center of this critical decision about how to approach a return to school remain two key facts. We have the responsibility of providing our 50,000 students a safe and quality learning experience. And, we have the responsibility of providing our over 7,000 employees who work in service of our students a safe and healthy workplace. And this is why any approach to reopening schools must prioritize the health and safety considerations for students and staff. So while this recommendation doesn't come without challenges, it's a recommendation that prioritizes safety, and it's a recommendation that also prioritizes opportunities for learning and engagement. Virtual learning, as it's proposed here today, will be school. However, it is not going to replace the many benefits of the in-person experience we've become accustomed to. And we also know the reality of our in-person experiences will not be the same interactive experiences we have become accustomed to. But many of the brightest minds on the Henrico team are doing everything they can to plan for a safe, healthy, and engaging reimagined school day while we navigate the next nine weeks of this global pandemic. Our families and staff have told us what worked and what didn't work with online learning in the spring. We listened. Virtual learning to start the new school year will have the structure and flow of many elements of the school day. Students will have time to talk with their teachers, receive grades, and foster relationship. The experience for our students on September 8th will be different, but it has been reimagined with care, experience, and expertise. While I don't take the pleasure in making any recommendation that doesn't bring staff and students back together in person in our schools, it is the prudent path, given the concerns and conditions, and is an approach that will provide us, it will provide us a foundation to build upon in a gradual and strategic manner as we work to bring our students back to full in-person learning. I also have the utmost confidence in the abilities of our incredible teachers and staff to make us proud until all our students can safely return to our buildings. But, like any math student knows, it's not just enough to give you the answer or my recommendation. Today, we're going to show our work. At this time, I'd ask members of our division leadership team to come forward and explain where we've been and where we propose to go next.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell, and good afternoon, Chairman Cooper, members of the board, and our audience here in person, as well as those watching online. My name is Beth Tygen, and I am the Chief of Staff for Henrico County Public Schools. Joining me this afternoon are other members of the division leadership team, who will come up throughout the presentation. Dr. Ingrid Grant is our Chief of School Leadership. Dr. Leslie Hughes is our Chief Learning Officer. Francine Bolden is our Chief of Human Resources Officer. Lenny Pritchard is our Chief of Operations. And Chris Sorenson is Chief of Finance. Also joining us today are Robyn Gilbert, our Supervisor of Student Health Services, Dr. Dani Avula, Medical Director for the Virginia Department of Health, the Henrico Health District, and Jim Ellis, our Director of Transportation. And together, we will present the board with an overview of the Henrico County Public Schools' 2020-2021 Return to School Plan. Here's the agenda for today's presentation. As the board is well aware, on March 12th, Governor Ralph Northam declared a state of emergency and closed Virginia schools due to the COVID-19 health threat. On March 23rd, 2020, the governor issued an order for schools to remain closed for the rest of the 2019-2020 academic year. This was an unprecedented time in history. School divisions across the nation found themselves largely unprepared for the reality of providing traditional schooling in a distanced or virtual manner. Since the closure of schools, the Virginia Department of Education, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and the Virginia Department of Health have provided guidance to school divisions for reopening schools. Henrico has been using this guidance to inform our plans as we have transitioned from Phase I to Phase II to Phase III. The Phase Guidance for Virginia Schools was updated as recently as July 6th. This update reflects the latest science and the best public health guidance and recommendations available at the time to reduce, but not eliminate, the risk of transmission of COVID-19 in school settings. There's a lot of information and misinformation circulating about the transmission of COVID-19, and the Virginia Department of Education has committed to continuing to provide up-to-date information based on the latest research. The most significant change in guidance was that in school settings, schools are encouraged to aim for six feet of physical distance to the greatest extent possible. However, if six feet of distance is not feasible, inclusive of inside our buildings and on our buses, schools can implement a combination of face coverings and a minimum of three feet distance between everyone present. While this change in social distancing could allow for a greater number of students in the classrooms at one time, we felt it was important to look at other factors besides social distancing. School divisions have not been provided with specific metrics to guide the reopening of schools. So we wanted to hear from our staff and our community to further shape our plan. We heard from our families through a survey in late June, early July, as well as in social media posts, emails, and most recently, at the July 14th community meeting. As for staff, we knew many still had questions about how the change in social distancing would impact them. While the right information was captured via the staff survey, just like the family survey, the data collected was from late June and early July. Numerous staff focus groups provided more recent data, having been collected within the past few weeks. The leadership team made every effort to hear from staff across job categories, disciplines, and magisterial districts. We heard from staff who worked directly with students, classroom teachers and bus drivers, and we heard from support staff. The feedback they provided helped to guide the recommendation, the recommended return-to-school approach, a full virtual approach supported by the leadership team and the superintendent. As a part of the planning for reopening schools, feedback from families and staff was sought. This pie chart and the next merely provide a visual of who responded to our family and staff surveys the end of June, beginning of July. The groups were fairly representative of the overall group sizes. This slide shows the family respondents by school level of their children. And this pie chart shows the staff respondents by work location. As referenced previously, the surveys were administered between June 24th and July 5th. The leadership understands that the data represents a snapshot in time and may no longer reflect the participants' beliefs. Survey data at the time indicated that over 72% of families trusted Henrico County Public Schools' leadership to take the appropriate health and safety measures before bringing students back to school. Over 70% of staff reported that they feel well-informed about the health and safety measures being taken to allow employees to return to the workplace. Yet only half of the staff feel comfortable returning to their physical work location should Henrico County Public Schools reopen. Again, this data was prior to the recent rise in the positivity percentage of cases in Virginia. As a testament to families' trust in Henrico County Public School leadership in regard to providing a safe learning environment, over 75% of families indicated the best learning pathway for their family would be one of the hybrid models. By a slim margin, the most selected hybrid pathway by families and staff was the alternate day option. The various feedback received from families and staff through the surveys and focus groups helped narrow the discussion for today. And at this point, I will turn the presentation over to Dr. Ingrid Grant, and she will dive into the return-to-school priorities and protocols.
Thank you, Dr. Tygen. As we now take a look at our return-to-school priorities, as a district, our goal was for a safe and healthy full-time return of students and staff for the upcoming school year, to include alternative approaches. We're making informed decisions driven by local and state health data, following CDC and VDOE guidance, with the goal of restoring optimal conditions for teaching and learning. In addition, we have engaged our staff and communities on how to reopen our schools safely through various means of communication. As Dr. Tygen mentioned, this included surveying our staff and families, holding focus groups, and in-person community meetings. Since our survey, 63% of our families who responded to our survey were comfortable with their children returning to school in Henrico County Public Schools. Parents and teachers have reached out since and informed us that they're a little hesitant now and would change their responses due to the current situation. Our top priority in reopening our schools is ensuring safety and wellness of staff, students, and community. In all aspects of our planning, we have made every effort to take into account the diverse needs of our community. Recognizing is vitally important that we ensure educational equity for all students. Our Department of Family and Community Engagement continues to provide weekly learning series and leverages partnerships within our community to provide resources and supports for our families. For example, we continue to partner with communities and schools that support students and families most impacted by COVID-19 and the Henrico Educational Foundation. Also, we are prioritizing groups of students from whom virtual learning presents more challenges. HCPS will continue to provide technology devices for all students and hotspots if needed. To support our teachers, we are providing resources and professional learning opportunities this summer to include instruction on best practices for teaching and learning, and engaging parents virtually using our learning platform, Schoology, and embedding cultural responsiveness within our curriculum. Teachers indicated during focus groups a need for continued support and providing professional learning. Dr. Hughes will address professional learning later in the presentation. Most importantly, we have plans for supporting the social-emotional needs of all students and staff to ensure our schools are conducive for teaching and learning. We will continue to see feedback from the community on reopening our schools and ensuring the necessary resources and safety measures are in place for the upcoming school year. This lab provides a suggested continuum on how we envision taking measured strategic approach to returning to full in-person instruction. Moving from full virtual learning with limited in-person opportunities for select groups to large groups of students back in our classroom. This gradual, measured approach would consist of the following approaches and allow us to respond to what is a dynamic and fluid situation. Approach one: Schools and offices are closed to staff, students, and public. Schools will follow the full virtual learning approach. Approach two: Schools and offices are open by appointment only with limited in-person learning. And please note that this approach, Approach Two, aligns with the recommendation being made today by the administration. Approach three: We will continue to have schools and offices open by appointment only. Schools will follow the hybrid approach of learning, and a virtual approach will be available for students and teachers. Approach four: Schools are business as usual, being open to the public during regular business hours. Teachers and students are engaged in in-person learning as a part of a full return with a virtual approach available. Please remember, schools and offices will follow health and safety protocols in all approaches, and teachers are expected to teach five days a week throughout the continuum, whether full virtual, a hybrid face-to-face, or virtual, and a full in-person learning approach to reopening schools. Here we have correlated the health and safety protocols to our gradual approach in returning to school full-time. No matter how we approach reopening, the following health and safety protocols will be implemented at any time our buses are rolling and our school buildings are open for in-person services for our students and families and/or for instruction at any level. Safety first is our top priority in reopening schools following CDC and VDOE guidance. These are the driving protocols for any return to school that involves a safe return in any of our return-to-school approaches. Physical distancing of three feet to six feet will be maintained on buses and in classrooms depending on reopening approach. The survey results indicated over 60% of our families who responded to the survey felt students should be required to wear face coverings. Face coverings for staff and students will be required unless there is a documented health condition that prevents a staff member or student from wearing a face covering during the school day. School would group cohorts of students when possible. Elementary students would remain in their classrooms, and secondary students would move through their schedules following distancing guidelines and attending up to four classes per day. Schools would establish designated hand-washing breaks throughout the day, and hand sanitizers would be available in each classroom. Students are encouraged to have their supply of sanitizer for use throughout the day. Increased cleaning on buses, classes, and high-touch surfaces throughout the school day and after school. Guidelines will be established to limit the use of common spaces to ensure social distancing measures. No shared supplies as pencils, such as pencils and crayons, and if materials are shared, they will be sanitized after each use. A curbside food delivery process is being devised to provide breakfast and lunch for students participating in full virtual approach. Health screening protocols will be provided for staff, students, and school visitors to minimize risk to others. Health and safety protocols may be increased to respond to changing conditions. Any such changes would be communicated to all stakeholders before implementation. Later in the presentation, you will receive further details on health risk mitigation plans and safety protocols for this upcoming school year. We will now take a look at the continuum through the lens of teaching and learning following the same protocols as the health and safety protocols. Approach one: No in-person instruction. All meetings and teaching and learning are virtual. Schools are closed to the public. Approach two: Most students are learning virtually while in-person learning on a limited basis for select individuals or groups of students. During Phase II, students and teachers are engaged in five days of virtual instruction. Teachers would have the flexibility of teaching virtually from home or their classroom. Approach three: Shifts to in-person instruction for students. In the hybrid approach, students will receive two days of in-person learning with three days of virtual learning. Teachers will have the flexibility to teach in-person or virtually with a half-day of planning and/or professional learning each Friday. Families will have the option to continue having their child learn in a 100% virtual capacity that parallels their peers. Approach four: Transition to business as usual. Schools and offices are open to the public during regular business hours. Teachers and students are engaged in in-person learning five days a week, and a virtual option is available for teachers and students. As stated earlier, schools and offices will continue to follow health and safety protocols across all phases, approaches. We will now focus on the three return-to-school approaches that have been examined most closely during the planning process. These approaches are shown here on the screen. Let's start by examining the aspects of a five-day return, which would of course include a virtual learning option for those who choose it. While the number of days mirror the traditional school year to which our staff and families are accustomed, the conditions inside our schools and classrooms would be drastically different with a highly modified school day. At the same time, all health and safety mitigation strategies listed earlier would be in place. It is important to note that this return calls for three feet of distancing both on buses and in classrooms. The new guidance of three feet of distancing coupled with face covering allows for the consideration of this approach. With the five-day return, families may opt for a full virtual learning experience that parallels the in-person instruction in the classroom. Let's take a look into the details of a five-day return. Students would attend school daily, and safety measures will require three-foot distancing at all times, as well as the use of face coverings combined with increased cleaning. Elementary students would largely remain grouped with their classes or cohort group all day and eat lunch in the classroom. Lamp, teachers, library, art, music, and PE would serve students in their classrooms. Lamp and teachers shared their concerns about being exposed to multiple schools and classrooms during a focus group. When learning spaces are utilized, they will be sanitized between student groups. Students will be given the opportunities for outside recess. However, student movement inside the school building would be dramatically limited to inside the same classroom to avoid groups of students mixing. In the secondary focus group, the majority of the teachers were not in favor of five-day approach due to the health and safety risks posed by multiple exposures throughout the school day. Secondary students would move through their schedules, adhering to social distancing guidelines, attending up to four classes per day. Also, hand sanitizer would be provided for each classroom, and frequent hand washing would be encouraged. Following each class period, secondary students would be provided with cleaning supplies to sanitize their desks. Teachers and some parents expressed significant concerns, not only about three-foot distancing being insufficient, but also about the effectiveness of cleaning process and that other components of the health mitigation plan would be implemented correctly or adequately maintained. If the division was to move into a five-day approach, teachers and families may opt for a full virtual learning experience that parallels the in-person instruction in the classroom. Under this approach, while students have the option for a full five-day or full virtual return, there is no in-between. One concern that has been raised is the social-emotional well-being of students with little opportunity to be reacclimated to an extremely different school environment while wearing a face covering all day. All drastically moving from one end of the continuum to the other could impact students, teachers, and families. Now let's talk about the hybrid return. Previously, we communicated and shared several hybrid approaches. By a slight margin, more families indicated through a survey that they would support the alternate-day hybrid approach based on this data if and when the school division should use a hybrid. That the alternate-day, A-B-A-V, return be used, with two days being in-person, three days virtual learning, and with one day, Fridays, being half-day dedicated to synchronous virtual learning, and the other half of the day being dedicated to teacher planning and professional learning. Here we have an example of a hybrid alternate-day, A-B, in-person learning approach, how it would work for students and teachers. Group A would attend classes on Monday and Wednesdays in-person, and Group B would attend classes on Tuesday and Thursday. For secondary students, in Group A would attend Day One classes on Monday, Middle Schools 1, 2, 3, 4, High Schools 1, 3, 5, 7. And their Day Two classes on Wednesday, Middle School periods 5, 6, 7, 8, and High School periods 1, 2, 4, 7, 1, 2, 4, 6, excuse me. High Schools have a repeating first period. Students in Group B would attend their Day One classes on Tuesday and their Day Two classes on Thursday. The three days when students are not attending school in-person, they would learn from home and complete assigned work. Students may be independently working on assignments, using adaptive software, or engaging in new learning through videos and other resources provided by their classroom teacher through Schoology. Elementary and secondary students would have synchronous learning for half-day on Friday. Secondary students would alternate Day One and Day Two schedule each week. Teachers have planning and a professional learning for half-day on Friday. Families have the opportunity to participate in virtual learning full-time in the hybrid return and follow their returning schedules. All health and safety mitigation strategies mentioned earlier in the presentation would apply within schools and classrooms. Now let us take a look at the virtual return, which is the approach being recommended by the administration for the first nine weeks. In a virtual return, all students will participate in virtual learning and follow their assigned school schedules, in keeping with the gradual strategic approach to returning our students to in-person instruction. In this approach, we will strive to gradually increase opportunities as health and safety conditions allow for limited in-person learning, focusing on groups of students for whom virtual learning presents more challenges. This means, at the start of the school year, we'll be prioritizing efforts to provide limited in-person learning for students in special education, early learners in grades pre-K through three, English learners, and other specialty programs. Many special programs, such as A-Centers classes, involve hands-on, which would best be learned in practice, face-to-face experiences such as House Building and ISAP, Individual Student Alternative Education Plan, programs where students receive programs where students receive one-on-one instruction on skills such as masonry and other outdoor settings in or as they prepare for the GED testing. This kind of limited in-person instruction could take the form of students coming to the schools' classrooms via scheduled appointments with teachers while following all aspects of our health mitigation plan. Teachers may offer limited small-group opportunities in their classrooms, as well as by appointment. School administrators and teachers would communicate these opportunities to families directly and would not require any in-person experience for families who opt not to participate. A virtual return to school will include live, real-time instruction by teachers, as well as digital and non-digital coursework. This is much different than the spring emergency plan. We have newly designed and robust developmentally appropriate lessons for students in pre-K through 12. Attendance, coursework, and participation are required and will be monitored, just as they would in a traditional classroom. Lack of participation, failure to complete coursework, or show mastery of standards will result in the same outcomes that would have happened during the traditional school year. Again, we will work to, again, we will work to offer limited in-person support for students in accordance with VDOE Phase Two guidance while prioritizing the division's focus on groups of students to whom virtual learning presents most significant challenges. This could mean that in the first nine weeks, the following groups of students with the numbers of students who may receive limited in-person instruction. Special education, as recommended by IEP teams, would be hard to give a number due to the unique considerations of each student's IEP. Though, we have approximately 1,000 students in our integrated services programs who have the most significant needs. English Language Learner Level One, 702 students. Pre-K Virtual Preschool Initiative, 744 students. Early Childhood Special Education, 208 students. Head Start, 172 students. And K-3, 14,535 students. Though, this gradual approach, in-person opportunities would demonstrate the effectiveness of the health mitigation and build confidence with staff and families prior to transitioning from full virtual to a hybrid return to full return. To ensure equity for all, students will receive school-issued iPad, Chromebook, or laptop, depending on the grade level. Wi-Fi hotspots are available for students without home internet access. The newly designed, enhanced, and developmentally appropriate synchronous and asynchronous instruction would occur each day. Synchronous learning is online distance education that happens in real-time, delivered by a teacher at a specific time or Virtual Virginia courses. Methods of synchronous online learning include video conferencing, teleconferencing, live chatting, and live lessons using Microsoft Teams as their virtual platform. Asynchronous learning is online or virtual learning with students that happens when teachers are supporting an individual or small group during a set schedule. Students will have opportunities to access content and resources independently during scheduled times using Schoology. The full virtual return would leverage the variety of courses that students can access regardless of grade level or course track specialty center, CTE. It's important to reiterate that this option is not the same as the emergency virtual learning students engaged in during the spring. Let us take a look at a sample schedule. In the virtual return, school would create developmentally appropriate schedules for each grade level that mirrors the traditional in-person daily routine. On this slide, please note a sample schedule. Individual elementary teachers would create their own unique class schedules that take into account the needs of their students and communicate those directly with families. The schedules developed by each teacher will be mindful of students' developmental needs and strike a balance of whole-group, independent, small-group, or peer collaboration, just as the regular classroom day where teachers do not deliver whole-group instruction all day. The virtual instructional day will include the use of a variety of adaptive, developmentally appropriate programs, independent practice when teachers are providing students with small group, including differentiated reading instruction. Now let's take a look at the secondary schedule. Students will receive a combination of live synchronous and asynchronous learning using Schoology during the instructional periods. Microsoft Teams would be utilized to engage students through small-group instruction, discussion groups, and asynchronous learning. This slide shows a sample for both middle and high school students. Classes would run their normal length of time, and both secondary schedules would include extended learning, advisory, academic support, extracurricular meetings, and time for case managers to meet with their special education students. And a lunch break for all students. The middle school schedule would also include a built-in time for advisory lessons. The COVID-19 pandemic has given us a unique opportunity to reflect on and rethink our mission forward for this upcoming school year. We have used what we've learned from emergency closing, survey data, a community meeting, focus groups, and feedback we have received from our families and teachers to develop more equitable and robust learning options for our students. Next, Dr. Hughes from our Division of Learning will discuss our instructional plan for the upcoming school year.
Thank you, Dr. Grant. The increased availability of virtual learning resources...
Doctor Hughes, can you pull the mic down, please? I'm not speaking about your height, I just want you to bring it down a bit.
I totally understand.
Thank you so much.
Better now?
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much.
I get that a lot, so don't worry. The increased availability of virtual learning resources is extremely beneficial to students who require support through home-based and home-bound instruction. Students who are currently served in the home-bound or home-based setting or who are currently utilize programming such as Edge Annuity and Virtual Virginia will continue to do so at the greatest extent possible, along with engaging in the virtual experiences available for students. In-person support will be provided for students with disabilities as determined by IEP teams. Students with medical needs will be provided in-person support based on student need and parent consent. Students who are eligible under Section 504 would continue to receive the accommodations and/or services as outlined in their 504 plans, no matter the reopening approach. Many eligible students will not require changes to their current 504 plans because their plans can be implemented as currently written during either in-person or virtual learning. Other eligible students may require a 504 team meeting to be held in order to consider changes to the current 504 plan to support their access to education. Parents and guardians can contact school counseling directors in secondary and/or school administration in elementary to request a 504 meeting for when staff returns the week of August 30th or at some other mutually decided time at the beginning of the school year. When school counselors return, they will prioritize proactively reaching out to parents and guardians of students on their caseloads to schedule meetings as needed. 504 meetings will also be scheduled as needed during the year as school staff and parents and guardians gather more information on students' individual needs. A continuing priority for the district has been developing a plan to resume in-person evaluations for students who are going through the eligibility process. These evaluations will begin, will resume, excuse me, beginning August 1st. Guidelines for safety measures to protect both the evaluator and the student, along with guidance for prioritizing evaluations based on the needs of students, will be shared with families before students are asked to participate in assessments. Each building has selected a room that will be used as a consistent testing environment, equipped with plexiglass shields and additional PPE to promote student and staff safety. Evaluators have been provided guidelines for maintaining social distancing while approximating the standardized processes for the evaluations to the greatest extent possible. If parents and students are unable to engage in in-person evaluations, teams will be moving forward with virtual evaluation options, if possible, to expedite eligibility decision-making. IEP teams will be looking at what supports can be put in place as we move forward in our return to learning approaches. Due to the size of special education teams, IEP and eligibility meetings will remain virtual using the parent portal. Since the emergency closure in March, staff have spent countless hours researching instructional delivery models to ensure the needs of students are met, despite the manner in which we may be reopening schools. In addition, survey results from staff and family were reviewed for stakeholder feedback. The Division of Learning refined approaches to ensure pre-K through 12 teachers and staff have the necessary curriculum available to ensure robust, deeper learning experiences. Social-emotional learning, no matter the reopening approach, has been prioritized to ensure students participate in activities and experiences that connect them to their school and the community. Based on teacher and family feedback, curriculum and resources have been streamlined into one platform, Schoology, which is the division's learning management system. This platform allows teachers, students, and parents to engage with the curriculum and division resources in a one-stop shop. The use of Schoology provides us the flexibility to continue with robust instruction in any reopening approach or any future school closure. To assist teachers with instructional delivery in any of the reopening approaches, the division purchased a variety of digital resources, many of which are adaptive for learners, so that all pre-K students across our division will have equitable access and opportunities to interact with quality digital experiences that adjust based on student need. Many of these digital resources include a teacher dashboard that provides valuable data to teachers to ascertain students' level of performance. This critical data will assist teachers with identifying gaps that will allow them to adjust instructional practices, excuse me, for individual student need. Professional learning has been developed to support the needs of teachers and staff who will engage students in virtual and on-campus learning experiences. Professional learning is currently live for teachers and staff through HCPSU and is designed to access anytime, anywhere. Please note that student learning opportunities and experiences that occur moving forward are not the same as what students engaged in during the time of the emergency COVID closure. The emergency closure was a time to review and extend, one of meeting students' needs while being respectful of families during an unprecedented time, and while allowing students a continuity of learning, allowing for time to meet course requirements to earn credit, and a time to fulfill graduation requirements. The reopening of school is different. This is a time to move forward and begin a new year. Students will engage in forward learning while ensuring safety guidelines and protocols are in place. No matter the return approach, teachers and staff will assess students' current levels of performance based on grade level standards through a variety of measures to determine students' starting points, noted gaps in learning, and opportunities for growth. Elementary students will have equitable access across the county to a variety of digital resources, some of which are shown on the slide. These digital resources will be embedded into the curriculum and will complement any of the reopening approaches. These resources allow us to be nimble in our instructional delivery and can be used to complement face-to-face instruction or can be used by students independently. These resources support literacy instruction, math, social studies, and science. Several new adaptive resources, such as Achieve 3000, will allow students to engage in academic content at their own reading level, thus providing teachers the critical data necessary to ascertain students' strengths and areas of growth in literacy. Secondary students also have a variety of adaptive resources to support instruction. These resources complement learning in the classroom or virtually in math, English, writing, or other content areas. Regardless of whether or not the students are learning in person or via the virtual learning approach, staff realize the gravity of students being removed of a school experience since March, and that the transition to the new school year may require support beyond academics. In elementary, social-emotional learning will be embedded into the school day through morning meetings utilizing the program Stanford Harmony. School counseling lessons will also focus on social-emotional learning. Secondary students will be provided social-emotional learning through the second-step program in middle school or embedded into lessons as needed in middle and high school. School counselors are available to provide individual or small-group counseling sessions. In addition, each school has a school-based mental health team consisting of school counselors, school social workers, and school psychologists who can assist students needing additional support. We realize that the return to school, no matter the opening approach, will be particularly difficult for students who are in transition, such as first-time pre-K students, first-time K students, rising middle and high school students, as well as students who are new to HCPS. Plans to ensure the needs of these students are met will be developed in collaboration with school counselors, teachers, and school administration. Student focus groups will be formed to gather feedback on teaching, learning, assessment, and social-emotional experiences. We know that students are our most valuable resource and that their input and suggestion will be another valuable data point to help drive our support of their learning. Resources for staff to assist with wellness and individual needs are available through Human Resources via the Employee Assistance Program. In addition, a course has been created in Schoology to house further resources for employees seeking social or emotional support beyond the school setting. Teachers and staff must have quality professional learning experiences that are tightly aligned to what they need to know to ensure the understanding of how to deliver quality teaching and learning experiences and to utilize the curriculum, no matter the reopening approach. As noted earlier, to ensure preparedness for the school year, teachers have already begun to participate in a variety of online professional learning workshops and courses. Through the virtual campus, HPCSU, which is Henrico's Professional Learning Virtual Campus, staff are able to access courses organized by grade level for instructional content or choose a broader selection of specialized learning sessions. In this easy-to-navigate campus, teachers log into Schoology to discover a variety of professional learning opportunities. Learning options in HPCSU reflect topics most requested by staff and were intentionally designed to meet the specific needs of staff. A menu of asynchronous online courses are available now, and additional options, including instructional content, will continue to be added throughout the summer. We are particularly excited to feature the HCPS Online Educators Workshop and the Ensuring Equity Series. It is important to note these professional learning experiences can occur anytime, anywhere, and are flexible within the school calendar. Teachers can participate during the summer, during Teacher Work Week, and during the two days built into the school calendar. Three days in August, resulting from the calendar recommendation, will be coming forward later today that will allow teachers to further engage in learning in August before the school year begins. The Division of Learning is excited to share that the Community Foundation, through their COVID response funding, awarded Henrico County Public Schools a $60,000 grant to be used to support professional learning for teachers and leaders as we prepare for a virtual school opening. Sincere appreciation is extended to the Henrico Education Foundation for cementing the grant. Professional learning for teachers on Schoology is being developed in two sessions. My Schoology Classroom Part One provides all Henrico teachers with the Schoology essentials necessary for teaching and learning in a hybrid and parallel learning environments. Part Two will have more advanced teachers and will focus on how teachers can deliver design... design, and assess using the Schoology platform. According to survey results, parents requested further resources on how to support learning at home. To assist families in understanding the instructional resources available to students, and also to provide families with additional learning resources, a Family Schoology course is being developed to aid parents in navigating the Division's learning management platform. More information will be communicated on when the course will be released and how parents can participate. In addition, all pre-K through 12 family resources that were available on the EdFlix site will remain available for families during the school year. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Francine Bolden, who will provide details on the Henrico County Public Schools' health plan.
Good afternoon. Dr. Grant promised earlier in the presentation that we would return to the health and safety protocols to learn more specific details about the Division's health plan for reopening our school buildings. All safety protocols are included in our health plan, which will be posted on the HCPS 2021 Mission Forward website next week. The health plan was created with the intent of having staff and students return to our buildings, whether it is for limited in-person instruction, hybrid, or a full return. Thus, this plan will provide the appropriate guidance regardless of the return to school These health and safety protocols are included in our health plan. Based on the feedback during focus group discussions, our staff wants to know everything the Division is doing to keep students and staff safe and healthy. So let's take a deeper dive into our plan. We will begin with our Chief of Operations and hear more about transportation efforts.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. I'm being joined today by Jim Ellis, our Director of People Transportation, and I will ask him to share the transportation plan with you.
Good afternoon. Transportation will implement the following protocols on our school buses for staff and students. Physical distancing will be created between students on buses, limiting seating capacity. Six-foot social distancing allows a student in every other seat. Three-foot social distancing allows for one student per seat. Siblings will be allowed to sit in one seat together without the need for social distancing. During a focus group meeting with bus drivers, assistants, and zone supervisors, it was determined that buses will need to load from the back of the bus to the front and unload from the front of the bus to the back to limit the mixing of students. It was also suggested that once we establish ridership on the bus, we will work toward assigned seating. When riding the bus, all students will be required to wear a cloth face covering as medically and developmentally appropriate. Windows will be open to generate airflow on the bus when feasible. All drivers and assistants will be required to wear cloth face covering while transporting students as medically appropriate. Cleaning and disinfecting of buses and county vehicles will be conducted after each run, including the last run of the day, to ensure all buses are clean before each run. Once a decision has been made to return to in-person instruction, schools will reach out to their families to determine their choice of in-person or full virtual learning. Families eligible for transportation, opting to attend in-person, will be asked to commit to riding or not riding the bus. This information will allow transportation to determine if there will be a need for multiple runs or a need for schools to stagger start times. Families should expect transportation schedules to differ from previous school years and should remain flexible as the Division works to determine student transportation needs. Lenny Pritchard will now provide information about facilities.
Again, good afternoon. Facilities will have the following responsibilities to assist with our reopening. Continued and new hygiene practices will consist of sneeze guards, also known as Plexiglass panels, will be installed in office areas that include front offices and counseling departments at schools to add an extra level of protection for staff and for families. Disposable face coverings will be supplied for visitors who arrive without one, but we will encourage everyone to always have a mask with them. Signers on each of our facilities will ask all visitors to wear a face covering upon entering. Cleaning and disinfecting protocols will be implemented that are consistent with CDC guidelines and recommendations. This will also include expectations of frequent cleaning of hot-touch surfaces in buildings, buses, and county vehicles. Additional hand sanitizer dispensers will be available at schools, administration buildings, in each classroom, office, workroom, and high-traffic areas. Supplies will also be available in each classroom for frequent cleaning of hot-touch surfaces such as doorknobs, desks, and tabletop surfaces. Items that will be used by multiple students will be cleaned in between student use. We will increase the cleaning of frequently-used areas such as our bathrooms and clinics. ACPS will ensure ventilation systems operate properly and increase circulation of outdoor air as much as possible by ensuring that. The ventilation systems will be reviewed each day before school starts to ensure systems operate properly. Filters will be evaluated to determine if higher-grade filters can be installed without compromising system performance. All heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, better known as HVAC, systems in schools will be reviewed to maximize the fresh air supply as recommended for each existing system's design. The building's air will be flushed for a minimum of one week prior to staff and students re-entering the building. Henrico County Public Schools will ensure that water systems are safe to use after the prolonged facility shutdown by flushing the water system regularly during the summer months to ensure proper water flow throughout the pipes and the elimination of stagnant water sources. We will block water fountains from being used during reopening. However, the units will remain operational so that the facility staff is able to regularly flush the water system to maintain a healthy water system within the building. Even though we will ensure our water systems remain safe to use, we will not allow water fountains to be used to reduce congregation and any potential exposures. Students will be asked to bring their own water and water bottles. To minimize the virus exposure, schools' buildings will not be available for outside groups during the 2021 school year. Now Chris Sorenson will provide information on food services.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. As Mr. Pritchard said on the walk-through, food services. So meals will be provided to students by the school nutrition services through the traditional USDA National Lunch Program. As students return to our buildings, communal spaces like cafeteria or comment areas will not be open to large groups of students. Elementary students will select meal choices the prior day, allowing their breakfast and lunch to be delivered to their classrooms. Secondary students will be allowed to enter the cafeteria to pick up meals in closed containers or bags. Students will then return to the classroom to eat. This process will allow for more meal choices, including hot and à la carte options. Students will be expected to clean their hands with hand sanitizer prior to entering their lunch code when using their account. Cafeteria areas will implement physical distancing, and floors will be marked in six-foot intervals. Cafeteria workers preparing food containers or bags will utilize appropriate personal protective equipment. School nutrition staff will continue to monitor students' allergies, special needs, and account balances. Prepayment of student meals will be encouraged to minimize the exchange of currency. Students whose families choose the virtual option in the hybrid approach will be able to order curbside meals Monday through Thursday, with an additional breakfast and lunch provided on Thursday for Friday. This level of service will also be provided in our virtual approach. Students participating in alternate-day hybrid approach may order an additional breakfast and lunch for days they're not physically in the building from Monday to Thursday. Hybrid students may also order a meal for Friday before leaving on Wednesdays or Thursdays, depending on their AV assignment. Now Dr. Tygen will return to talk about health protocols.
I'm joined by Robyn Gilbert, our Supervisor of Student Health Services, and Dr. Danny Avula, the Medical Director of the Virginia Department of Health for the Henrico Health District. Before turning the presentation over to Mrs. Gilbert and Dr. Avula, let's take a moment to talk about metrics and what information was used to determine the recommendation for a full virtual return by the leadership team and Dr. Cashwell. In full disclosure, there is a lack of consistency around COVID-19 health data, which has left schools seeking clear metrics that are stable over time to make data-driven decisions. In this void, Henrico County Public Schools use Virginia's positivity data as reported by Johns Hopkins University. When the governor announced Virginia would be transitioning from Phase 2 to Phase 3, the seven-day average percentage of positive tests in relationship to the total number of tests administered for Virginia the week prior to July 1 was under 4.5%. On Monday, when the recommendation was made to support a full virtual approach to reopening, the percentage of positive tests in relationship to the total number of tests administered for Virginia had climbed to 6.3%, indicating the infection rate was climbing. In addition to this change, the leadership team and superintendent had data from multiple sources that I shared earlier in the presentation. Through the focus group process and emails from families and absent benchmarks from the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Department of Health, the recommended metrics to consider bringing students back into school might be the percent positivity of Virginia combined with a defined duration of decline in cases or of no new cases. And that would be a recommendation we've heard from both families and staff. Leadership recommends the Student Health Advisory Board, known as SHAB, work with central office staff to establish a team to lead the work to clearly define metrics for the Division moving forward. We would appreciate having someone from Dr. Avula's team serving on this particular team, and we know they already participate in SHAB. And now I will turn it over to Mrs. Gilbert to share some of the key components of our
Thank you, Dr. Tygen. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. The School Division is seeing increases in COVID-19 cases, and they are resulting in quarantining of whole teams or workgroups. As more staff and students return to our buildings, larger groups may need to self-quarantine when there is a confirmed COVID-19 case within a given building. This will result in a shift from in-school to virtual learning. So as schools open in September, the goal is to employ health mitigation strategies that will make everyone feel and be safe. Staff and student health screenings are to be performed each day. Staff must perform and follow a specified cleaning protocol prior to reporting to work each day. In order to help educate our families about the need to do a health screen each morning, there will be division-wide communication prior to school's opening designed to educate families on the signs and symptoms of COVID-19. Families will be expected to monitor their children's health and keep any children home if they experience symptoms of COVID-19 or COVID-19 potential symptoms, including would be shortness of breath or a fever of 100.4 degrees Fahrenheit, or if someone in the household is under self-quarantine or self-isolation. If a student shows signs of illness while at school, the school nurse will conduct a health assessment in the health isolation area. Parents will be required to immediately pick up their student who is sick. There will also be random temperature checks of students and staff during the school day. It is important to note, anyone entering the school building, campus, outside of the school staff, or our students will be required to complete a health screening to include this temperature check prior to being allowed into our buildings. Henrico County Public Schools has worked closely with Henrico County Emergency Operations Center to ensure schools have personal protective equipment needed to reopen schools. However, with the increased cases of COVID-19 throughout our country, these supplies have been again stretched. At this time, we have ordered the needed supplies to prepare for reopening of our schools but have not yet received these supplies. Two cloth face coverings, once these are received, will be provided for all staff, and one cloth face covering will be provided for each student. There will be an additional supportive personnel protective equipment accessible on each bus and in each classroom as students or staff may have needs. The clinic will continue to care for our students as they have done in previous school years, but a health isolation room will be set up for any student or staff member displaying COVID-19-like symptoms to await this transport home. Full PPE or personal protective equipment will be accessible for use in the space, and coverage will be by the School Health Services staff. There will be 10 School Health Services staff trained in contact tracing. This is to assist the Health Department should we have an employee or student test positive. Any decision on time away from school and those impacted will be driven by the CDC and the Virginia Department of Health guidelines at the direction of the contact tracing team of the Henrico Health Department and communicated with our county leadership team. Henrico County Public Schools will work with the Henrico Health Department to communicate with those that are impacted. To provide additional information about what happens when there is an active infection in our school is Dr. Avula. He will also provide an overview of the data related to COVID-19 involving students and adults. He is also available to address questions that you may have. Dr. Avula?
Thank you for being with us, Dr. Avula. And I would just let the board members know that while for the other sections we're holding questions to the end, we'll be asking him questions so that he'll be able to leave. And thank you for giving so generously of your time to be here.
My pleasure. Good afternoon, everyone. Danny Avula, Public Health Director for the Henrico County Health Department. Nice to see you. I do have a presentation prepared, but I think in the interest of time, I'll just say that obviously this is an incredibly challenging decision. There's been a lot of frustration along the way because there's not clear guidance and that things are constantly changing, and I think the entire world has been in the same boat because we are regularly learning new things about how this disease impacts kids, families, adults, communities. So I think that, you know, you all recognize that there is no way to create a no-risk situation, and whenever we return to school, whether it's now or next quarter or next year, the process will be figuring out how do we do the best risk-benefit calculation for all people involved, for students, for families, for teachers, and for other school staff. And so we're here to help provide guidance, and the data that we do have, we've reviewed the school system's plans very thoroughly. They've done an incredible job of aligning to all of the best practice that's out there, and we will continue to be walking side by side with the school system on things like contact tracing and screening and acute response. I'll also say that, you know, I think we should lead all decisions through the equity lens, and in this particular situation, that lens cuts both ways, right? We have an equity issue for kids of color and low-income children who are going to have a harder time with virtual instruction. We also have an equity issue with the adults in our school system who are going to bear the brunt of COVID-19 more seriously. And so, again, there's just, there's no easy answers here, but that risk-benefit calculation and framework is what you all have to wade through. So I'll just, I'll pause and see what questions you all have for me.
Dr. Avula, thank you so much for your attendance and for the guidance.
Dr. Avula, thank you so much for your attendance and for the guidance that you've provided for our city and our county. I'm going to begin to my left with Ms. Atkins, and I will successively come down. So Ms. Atkins, you want to start?
So first of all, Dr. Avula, amazing job. I just want to personally tell you that the work that you're doing is beyond any words that I could offer you right now. And my hope is that you and your family can get to a place of a vacation.
I don't even know what that is.
Right now, that's not going to happen, right? I understand that.
It's coming.
Something that's been very interesting to me is the distribution of supplies. And so across our nation, I understand that not only just supplies with P P E, but medicine. You know, individuals that are Black, like me, and Brown, access and accessibility are two very different things. So when I hear that there's medical supplies, that there's access, it's not always accessible. And so when I hear things like, well, there's medicine available, it is on the shelf, but it's not always accessible, and that's if it's on the shelf. So I'd love to hear your perspective on how medical supplies and medicines are disseminated, right? My understanding is that once they become available, knowing that exports aren't all here to even make some of the medicines, it goes to our healthcare facilities first, then it filters down to our local healthcare agencies, and then is it disseminated, you know, to schools? Can you just shed some light on that for me?
Sure. So maybe I'll first start, Ms. Atkins, with the clarity around what medications are available and how are they effective with COVID-19? Right now, there are only really two medications that have been authorized for use in hospitalized patients. It's called remdesivir is one. It's an antiviral medication. And the other is Decadron, which is a very common steroid that's used in asthma and croup and all kinds of other scenarios. And both of those have been shown to have some positive impact on severely ill hospitalized individuals. Now, for everyone else who does not have severe disease, it's really kind of your mainstays of Tylenol and Motrin, and there's not really any other medication that can be helpful in the treatment of COVID-19. You really just need to, your immune system needs to fight it off, and so it's supportive care is the approach. So as it relates to the distribution of medicine, you know, the state does have, at least with remdesivir, which has been in short supply across the globe since its approval, the state does have an allotment, and then based on need, will distribute to hospitals all over the Commonwealth for use in that hospitalized setting. But there's not really a plan or a strategy for, you know, Tylenol and Motrin and sort of more easily accessible supportive medications. At the same time, I haven't heard much about shortages of those or lack of access. But I think your basic point is that there are clearly inequities in access to things that people need to be healthy, and P P E would be one example of those. And so I do think it's very important for us to, even as a school system, to be thoughtful about how are we prioritizing masks for all of our teachers and staff in the school and for our kids and families. And the school system has done some distribution of that. The county has done door-to-door distribution of masks, which I think is one part of the response, but we do need to figure out how to ensure that those things are available. The last thing I'll say about that is that last week, the National Academies of Science published kind of a compendium of all of the existing evidence around school reopening, and one of the things that they clearly conveyed was that the purchase of P P E needs to be prioritized, and federally and at the state level, we need to make sure we're funding those things to ensure that our teachers and faculty have access to those as they come back into schools.
Fantastic. Thank you for your response.
Ms. Sheen?
Oh, you're so short, Ms. Atkins. All right, I'll take up all your extra time. Dr. Avula, thank you so much for being with us. I'm a big fan of yours because you approach stuff with so much enthusiasm. If there's anyone that can get people excited about wearing a mask, it's you. So thank you. You know, you approach all your press conferences with the same enthusiasm I used to approach, like teaching physics, like all in. So I really love that. I have quite a few questions for you, so I appreciate your patience. The first one is around contact tracing. We know how essential that's going to be when our buildings open. Do you feel like 10 staff, of our staff working with your staff, is truly enough for 72 facilities and 50,000 students?
I think it should be. I mean, you know, the benchmarks that we've used for community-level contact tracing is somewhere between 15 to 30 contact tracers per 100,000 individuals. So 10 for our body of students, 50,000 students, and I don't actually know the staff numbers, but should be sufficient. And then if there's a need for more, then we've got the buffer of the Health Department contact tracers as well. So I'm very comfortable with that ratio.
Wonderful. I know also a big part of how beneficial contact tracing is, is going to be our test turnaround time, because if we're having a week to 10 days before we know that it's a positive, well, that, you know, those people have already propagated and been in contact with a lot of other people. So what does our test turnaround time look like, and what's the trend on that turnaround time?
Not good these last two weeks. So prior to, two weeks ago, we were consistently getting results in two to three days, and what we've seen over the last two weeks, I think largely correlating with the massive upswing of disease throughout the South and southwestern parts of this country, is that things are taking more like seven to nine days to turn around. And that is an extreme challenge in terms of our ability to effectively contain disease, to effectively contact trace, and ultimately, that's not going to be solved at the local level. We really need a coordinated national response to ensure that the right reagents, the right testing supplies, that all of those things are built out so we don't have these same delays. I will say that the state lab, which is what we typically use when we are actively pursuing an investigation, continues to have two- to three-day turnaround times, and obviously there will just be an ebb and flow depending on what the demand is. I mean, one concern I have is with institutes of higher education putting testing protocols into place, that's going to really put a demand on the system in the early fall. And so the state is certainly thinking through, how do we prepare for that scenario? When do we use pooled testing for, in that institute of higher education context where we, instead of testing each individual, we test pools of individuals as a surveillance mechanism and then can, and follow that up? So it's a really valid point you bring up. Everybody is hoping that it gets solved, but it is a crucial part of our ability to respond quickly and contain disease that's got to be fixed.
Yeah, and part of what I heard you say, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, you know, even these outbreaks in other parts of the country where our students might not have direct contact with in terms of spreading the virus, those outbreaks are affecting our ability to treat the virus in our area.
So remember, we can't really treat the virus effectively outside of supportive care, but...
Contain.
Yeah, it is affecting our ability because the national labs like LabCorp and Quest that have the same supply lines across the country are being impacted, and so that's really creating a slowdown here in Virginia as well.
And with the higher education institutions going back, I know you can't predict the future. If you did, think about how even better you'd be, but we could infer that that time might actually increase from where it is now.
That's my guess at this point because I don't know how much of this will get fixed in a month.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that insight. The next one is more of a statement. We really need quantitative metrics to understand when, you know, the word "safe" now has unfortunately become so ambiguous, and, you know, safe versus unsafe. We need quantitative metrics on when it is prudent to have school buildings open and close, and I think part of that, a big part of that, is going to be health metrics. And while all of us love kids, and, you know, some of us are professional educators up here, none of us are professional doctors, right? And so we're leaning on you guys to really have that expert opinion and help us develop those quantitative metrics. You know, and I think part of that's also going to be supply chain and, you know, the resources we have available, but I just really implore the Health Department to really help localities come up with qualitative metrics, even if it's by a zip code or whatever that is, whatever the best practice for you guys is, that's just going to be essential for us to keep our students safe this year.
Yeah, I mean, there's obviously discussion about this everywhere. You know, the state used a few of those metrics, case counts, percent positivity, hospitalization rates, and death rates, to decide whether we were going to go from phase zero to one to two to three. But, you know, I think that there just aren't clear, all of those, all of those metrics have to be taken in context with each other. Like, we can't just look at case rate because if our cases are only increasing in 20 to 30-year-olds, but, you know, the elderly who are actually most susceptible to severe consequences of these aren't being affected, that leads you down a different decision tree, right? So I think there's just so much context from case counts to percent positivity to who's actually getting severely impacted through hospitalization and death. And so, you know, what we're left with is having to make these contextualized decisions based on what's happening in our community. So as an example, in Henrico, we have maintained a pretty flat percent positivity. We're at 5.3% right now. The state continues to go up, but that's really being driven by numbers in the eastern part of the state. And again, I can't predict whether that's coming to Henrico or whether we can keep it at bay, but like, we are going to have to make contextualized decisions based on what's happening in our community.
Right. And I recognize that, and I would say that y'all are going to be better at making those contextualized decisions than we are. Can we talk a little bit about the three feet versus the six feet? So the only way we could even begin to fully reopen our buildings is using the three feet with face coverings. Have there, have there been any actual studies or like actual use of three feet with a face covering versus six feet, or is that just kind of a hypothetical thought?
Yeah, so the rest of the world uses three feet, right? So the World Health Organization's guidance around distancing was one meter of distance. Realize that's in a context where the rest of the world is way better at wearing masks than we are and way better at following through with recommendations and contact tracing and case investigation, et cetera, than we are. So I think the science really is around how far do your respiratory droplets propel? So when you talk, your respiratory droplets come out of your mouth, and then they flutter to the ground. When you cough or sneeze, they go further. So distancing by itself is not the remedy. Distancing has to be part of a comprehensive approach that includes mask-wearing, symptom screening, hand washing, and exclusion if you are symptomatic, right? So I think that the vast majority of your respiratory particles are going to be caught by a mask, and then if not, will likely fall to the ground within a three-feet distance, which is why the V D H and D O E guidelines say, you know, six feet is ideal, three feet with a mask is legitimate as well. So, and even when you cough or sneeze, you can actually propel respiratory droplets way more than six feet. In fact, some studies have showed, you know, respiratory droplets will transfer for 12 to 20 feet, given the right draft in a room. And so I just don't think we can take too, be too reassured by a six-foot versus three-foot differentiation. We really need to point to the fact that distancing is important, but so is mask-wearing and symptom screening and hand washing.
So, and part of what I'm hearing you say is the essential piece of mask-wearing. So, you know, we are recommending that everybody in our building wear masks, but we know for some of our students that will be harder to do properly than others. So if we find that our students can't routinely and almost always have their mask on correctly, that's a problem.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I do think particularly for special, kids with special educational needs, there may be other things that put them at higher risk anyway, and so we really need to be thoughtful about their risk situation before returning them to an in-school environment.
Thank you. I have three more questions. I really appreciate your patience.
I'm here for you.
And y'all's. So what happens when cold and flu season comes around? How do we delineate, you know, regular cold and flu symptoms from, you know, possible COVID symptoms? I have two young elementary schoolers, so I know as soon as a cough starts in the house, you know, we got it for five months, you know, between all the various winter bugs. So what do we do, you know?
I mean, there's, the symptoms, particularly in kids, almost entirely overlap, and so I think we're going to be, need to be rigorous about symptom screening and a lot more conservative than we would in another situation about keeping a child home when they're symptomatic, right? In any given year, we'll take a kid up with Tylenol and send them to school, and that's not good, right? It's not good for flu. Schools are places where flu outbreaks regularly occur. But, so my hope is that we will all get in the habit of screening our kids and ourselves for symptoms regularly, that we will have a lower threshold to be willing to keep that kid home. And, you know, in whatever situation comes out of this, likely, there will be both options for virtual and in-person. And so when a child has to be home for, you know, because they're symptomatic, then they can ideally switch over to a virtual means of learning. So, yeah, it will be incredibly challenging. I mean, the other part of that answer is that those kids will need to be moved to testing quickly, and we have a rapid flu test, so you can tell if it's flu or not, but you can't, you won't be able to tell if it's rhinovirus or coronavirus without good coronavirus testing.
Yeah, absolutely. And then kind of the flip side of that, you know, what about those with no symptoms? How do we help screen accurately for kids that are asymptomatic? Because we know that there's asymptomatic carriers, but they can still infect people. So, you know, when we have our health screening of like fever or shortness of breath, well, what about, what about those who are positive that don't present that way?
So I think we need to be more expansive about the symptoms that we're screening for. We're not just looking for fever, but we're really looking for the full list of symptoms that have been added to over the last few months as we've learned more about COVID, right? So if you go to the CDC website, there's a list of 11 symptoms that include things like gastrointestinal symptoms, diarrhea, nausea, loss of sense of taste and smell. So it makes the picture even more complex, but it does mean that we need to be regularly, you know, doing a more thorough screening of symptoms. Now, kids do have way more mild disease and often asymptomatic disease. The good news about that is that they're much less likely to transmit when they're asymptomatic. And so I think as long as we're doing those other pieces, if, so let's say we miss somebody through the symptom screening because they're positive but not showing symptoms, if they're still maintaining three feet of distance and wearing a mask and washing their hands, you know, those are the pieces that it takes to ultimately mitigate transmission.
Thank you. And then my last question is about the rate of change of positivity rate. So we know, you mentioned that locally, we're, in Henrico particularly, we're kind of flat, but if we, if we push that bubble out to be a little bit more like the central Virginia area, what's the, what's the rate of, how are we trending? Up, down, flat?
I would have to relook at the whole central region. Richmond, there's a slight uptick in percent positivity. They're at like 7.4% when I checked yesterday. Henrico's at 5.3%. And so Richmond's percent positivity has been slightly increasing since the beginning of July. I don't know Chesterfield and Hanover's very well.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, there's a, there is a pretty, there's a slight increase in case counts across the central region that clearly correlates with Phase 3 reopening. You know, as soon as July 1 hit, we had July 4 weekend, we had a lot more people mingling, intersecting. About a week after that, we started to see the uptick, and that has persisted. Now, if you look at Henrico's data around case counts, we had a huge uptick and then a huge drop-off. And it's hard to know exactly what that's due to. I think in large part, that was due to the significant outbreak that we're dealing with in the Henrico jail right now, because that was, you know, 100-plus cases that were added to our case count over the course of a few days. But I think also the delay in testing may be impacting our most recent week's worth of data, because if it's taking seven days to get test results back, you know, those won't actually be counted until next week. And so I think we'll need to continue watching carefully. Is this a sustained upward trend, or is it going to plateau and then head downward like we've seen at different times where we've seen bumps?
Yeah, so when we look at, I don't know if you're a calculus person, but if we look at like the second derivative of that data set, so like, how fast is the rate changing? Like, is our increase increasing more? You know what I'm saying? Is it getting faster? Is it getting slower?
Yeah, I mean, it just depends. So I would say the first week, it was a pretty rapid increase in Henrico. The second week, it was more of a flattening, and the third week, it's been a significant decrease.
Okay.
So, you know, it's, it depends what period of time that we look at, and I'm, we do a weekly report that we share with our county leadership and any other partners and health system partners. If that's something that you would like, I'm happy to add you to the list, and then you can sort of look at those numbers yourself.
Absolutely, that would be great.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. You have completed my line. Thank you. You have completed my line of questioning. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
So, that was interesting. A M.D. and a mathematician. I loved it. Thank you, Marcia. Ms. Hubbard, yes, ma'am.
Well, it's been a long week. I want to, again, thank you for being here. As you can imagine, we are having to deal with media, politics, mixed information. You know, we're getting it from all sides. So, I, I have a couple of things that I'm going to ask you. Just your reaction when people say, for example, "Kids don't get it." What is your first thought when you hear that?
Kids do get it, but it's significantly lower rates than the rest of the population.
And is their reaction to it?
Their, so, young kids have much less severe disease. So, I, I mean, you know, especially in kids, getting COVID is not really concerning to me. I mean, I think as long as the family is being careful, as long as people are thinking about when somebody needs to be isolated, as long as we're protecting the, the elderly and those with underlying conditions, I am much less concerned about a positive child because they're just, the, the, the risk of them getting severely ill is so small. So, you know, here in, in Virginia and Henrico, under 1% of our age 0 to 10, of our hospitalizations are in kids 0 to 10. At the state, we have about the same data, under 1% of that 0 to 10. I think our total case count in Henrico is somewhere between 3 and 4% for that 0 to 10 age group. So, kids are less likely to get it. They're certainly less likely to develop severe disease. Now, there are clearly outliers, right? We, we heard a lot about the multi-system inflammatory condition. We've had eight total cases of that in the state of Virginia. And so, you know, I, I think that we've got to, we've got to like, look at that in, in a larger context, right? We, we also forget that kids die of flu every year, too. And, and so, now, the story's very different for adults, and so I don't think we can just look at the impact of kids. But, the question was, what's the impact on kids? And, and I, the, the data clearly shows that kids are less infected, less severely infected, and the risk of, of developing severe disease is very, very low.
Well, and, and that leads to the next thing that we hear often is, because the kids don't get it, but they are oftentimes asymptomatic, so that they will spread it. And some people call kids superspreaders. I've heard that backed up a little bit, that, you know, people aren't saying that as much as they were even a month ago. But because kids have that ability to be asymptomatic more than other people, they are carriers more. And so, for example, you put kids in a school, like we're talking about, the adults that are with those children every day have, they're having more exposure. So, would that be accurate to, to think that, or no?
So, sorry, let me just capture the question. Are the adults who are in, in close contact with kids at higher risk?
At higher risk?
Yeah.
For exposure than they would otherwise, maybe, in their normal lives?
Sure. So, I say, I would say the answer is different for younger kids than it is for older kids.
Okay.
And it is all dependent on our ability to do, you know, each leg of that stool, right?
Right.
So, with a group of young kids, if we can find creative ways to, you know, encourage mask-wearing, to maintain distance, and to do symptom screening, the, the, the risk is pretty low. And that's borne out when we start to look at the data in the U.S. around daycares, because daycares have largely been open over the last three to four, five months even now. And then, school studies in other parts of the world where schools have continued to be open. And what we're seeing is that in high schools, there are significant outbreaks. Israel is one notable one, but that adolescents are transmitting more like adults. And then, what we're seeing in elementary and daycares is that you're seeing very low rates of transmission. There was a large study that looked at all of the YMCA daycares that have been open over the last four months, and then all of the daycares in New York City. On the YMCA side of this, and these are smaller groups, right? They're keeping younger kids, groups of 10 or less, but they're really able to do these other mitigation strategies, and that is, that is significantly decreasing the rate of transmission. In fact, in the Y studies, there was not a single case where you had more than one case in a, in a, in a particular daycare setting.
Okay. Now, we've heard also, I've gotten, I think I'm up to almost 600 emails in the last few days, actually. And a number of them are from doctors and pediatricians, and we hear a number of people refer to the Academy of Pediatricians report that they put out. But then, as soon as that report came out, it seemed to me they backed off a little bit from that report, so I'm curious what you're thinking about that pediatrician's report.
Yeah. I feel like the initial report came out strongly, "We should go back to school."
Right.
There was a revised statement that said, "Okay, it's got to be a little nuanced." It really is that younger kids should go back to school with, with all of these other things in place.
Exactly.
And then, last week's National Academy of Science really reiterated that, that, that younger kids are a, a less risky scenario than older kids. And given that risk-benefit calculation of the downsides of kids not being in person compared to the risk of COVID, that they still recommend a cautious re-entry to school for kids 10 and under.
Right. Well, and, and my last thing I'll, I'll ask you, and I, I obviously know you may not be able to answer this question, but we keep hearing, "Just wait for the fall." There's gonna be an uptick in the fall. We know it's going to happen. We, we hear this, and then it's kind of kicked down the road a little bit. So, I'm curious what you're hearing, what you're finding, or the latest predictions of what we're going to encounter. Obviously, this is July, and we're making a decision that will affect September.
Yeah, sure.
So, what are, what are you hearing as far as, I know Marcy mentioned trends, but other trends of what you're predicting for the future?
Yeah. I, I do think there is kind of an, an expectation across the board that we will see increased circulating disease in the late fall, early winter, when we see increased circulation of respiratory disease across, of other types of respiratory disease. I also think the impact of that, particularly for adults, is going to be really significant because if our hospitals start to fill up with people who've got the flu and, and COVID, that, that's going to create some real strain for our healthcare system, which is what we were trying to avoid when we shut down everything back in March. So, I do think that that is, you know, something we've got to anticipate, that we've got to monitor closely, and that we've got to, to make adjustments based on what the data is doing. So, for example, Texas, that opened up way too early and is exploding right now, they are now backing off elective surgeries because they need to create space in their, in their hospitals. So, you know, I, I think that Virginia has been really wise and really cautious, and certainly from the, the hospital capacity standpoint, we've been in really good shape for the, the duration of this pandemic, and that's certainly true here in the central Virginia region. So, all that to say that I do expect there will be more circulating disease. I do expect for adults, there will, that, that will create strain in the health system, and we, we, we will likely see some modulation of the phase that we're in and the precautions that we're taking.
Well, I mean, just yesterday, for example, my son decided to go visit people in New York, and about an hour after he left, the governor of New York adjusted their quarantine requirements and added Virginia to the list of people who have to quarantine for 14 days after they go to New York.
Yeah.
And so, I'm wondering if you know, what prompts that? Is it the fact that we're now up at 7.9? We were down in the fours. And regionally, you know, Henrico and, and the central Virginia region might not be as bad, but you know, there were 1,000 new cases reported yesterday in Virginia.
Yep.
And so, as, as a group of people who have to make this decision, should we be looking at that Virginia number or more of our local? I mean, obviously, nobody's staying home, they, like, they, as much as they should be anymore, but you know, people are, are moving all over Virginia. They travel. They go out and about. And so, even if you're in one area versus another, there can be community spread. So, are you, is your guidance that we look at the totality of it at that, like, right now, we're at 7.9? Or do we more look at that 5, 6 number that we are in Henrico?
Yeah. I'll answer the first question about New York. So, when New York made that decision about adding states to this quarantine, they had three specific criteria. I don't exactly remember it there, but one of them was a percent, states that have a percent positivity over 10, and then states that have a case rate of more than 10 cases per 100,000. And so, I think that's why Virginia got added, because our case rate at the state level is now more than 10 per 100,000 residents. So, what does that mean for us? Should we be making decisions at, at a state level versus a local level? And I think that, I think it depends how disparate that disease trend is. So, if you just look at the seven-day moving average of cases and percent positivity in northern Virginia, which is on a downward trend, in eastern Virginia, which is on a crazy-high upward trend.
B2C.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, here in central Virginia, where we have a little bit of an uptick, but it's, it's generally flatter, it, it becomes really hard to make state-level decisions. I mean, obviously, yes, people move from one community to another, although, I would say that in this COVID era, we should all be thinking twice about that, right? Like, we should all be thinking twice about, are we going to take that beach trip or not? Or are we going to avoid that potential exposure so that we can do things like return to school, you know? And I, I, on, on one hand, we've got to trust that people are going to make that responsible decision, and then at some point, we've got to legislate, you know, when that, when it's not happening. So, I expect that the governor will likely just continue to look at the data, and if we inch closer to that 10% positivity across the state, that was really our benchmark for, for, for moving through the phases.
Will roll back.
That he will be pretty quick to roll back, yeah.
Right. Okay. Thank you so much. I'll turn it over to Ms. Consella. Thank you for being here.
Hi. Thank you again for being here. I've got a question as to younger children, 0 to 10, older children that perhaps would be in our schools, 11 to 18. Do, do you believe perhaps that because the younger ones don't go out, they don't get it, whereas the older ones would be more social, perhaps tired of, tired of being quarantined and social distancing perhaps? I mean, are, are you seeing that at all?
Yeah, it's possible. I mean, I think the daycare data would suggest otherwise, right? The fact that they still have been consistently exposed to other children and other adults.
But daycare, I was just thinking in terms of, okay, all right, so the daycare, but the daycares are limited to how many kids?
Um, I think everybody has their own policies. They've generally been trying to do groupings, like classroom groupings of 10 or, or below.
Okay. Now, how often are you learning new things about COVID and what it's like?
Yeah.
Right? Do you believe we know everything we need to know yet?
Absolutely. I mean, I think what I started with this is there's so much we don't know, and that makes it really hard to make decisions, right?
It does.
And so, I think the, the reality is that every two to three weeks, we see a new body of data, whether it's around immunity. The CDC just changed their recommendations around people who have had COVID. You know, we used to do a lot of requiring that people get tested and make, make sure that they're negative before they come back to work or, or, you know, come back to a, a long-term care facility setting. And what we've realized is that people can stay testing positive for weeks. It does not mean that they're infectious, that your real period of infectiousness is 10 days after the onset of symptoms, but you can still have dead virus in your respiratory pathway that continues to let you test positively. So, the CDC now says, "We're no longer going to require testing. We're going to clear people after 10 days, plus a few other criteria." But, as one example of how things are constantly changing. So, you know, I mean, I think to, to answer the question, every two to three weeks, we find something new. And, and that, but, the further we go, the more data we do have, right? And so, we, we, yeah, we won't know everything.
Right.
But we've got to make decisions based on what we have seen so far.
Given the data that we know, given the potential issues in the rise in cases and PPE supply and testing issues that may be as a result of college kids going back to college, if you had a parent, and are you a parent in Henrico County Public Schools?
I am in Richmond City Schools.
Okay. So, if you lived in Henrico County, and you've seen our protocols, and you know what you know, what option would you choose? Virtual, five-day in-school, or hybrid?
Uh, I, so, I'll just tell you what our family's process had been.
Okay.
Prior to Richmond City's decision, my wife is an educator. She's an elementary school teacher. Actually, spent years at, at Henrico County Public Schools way back when, before we moved into the city. But she, because she teaches largely low-income students, really wanted to be back in schools full-time. I mean, she, she, having tried to do virtual education with her kindergarteners at the end of last year, just saw that that left a lot to be desired. And so, I think for her personally, the, the, the value add, the benefit for young kids who aren't going to suffer from COVID, but who are going to benefit a ton from in-person instruction, she, that was an easy decision for her to make. For our kids, I think the same thing is true, that I am not really worried about our kids developing severe disease, and we've made a lot of adjustments to our life to be really careful. We don't live in a multi-generational household, right? So, our grandparents live in town, but we have really limited contact and are really smart about it when we do see it. Now, if you're, if you have a grandparent that lives in the house, I'd make a different decision, you know? Or if I have a kid who has a trach or is on a vent, I would make a different decision. So, for us, relatively healthy kids, relatively low-risk, we were very prepared to go back full-time for everybody. I recognize that it's a different calculus for each person in each situation.
Right. It is a personal decision.
Absolutely.
But I was just wondering, I was just wondering what you would choose.
Yeah.
I appreciate you sharing.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Dr. Vula, many of my questions were already answered, but I did have two quick ones. My, my first question centers around, around students being required to remove their masks when they eat, and the respiratory droplets as far as how long the transmission and the virus are remaining on surfaces. What would you say in regards to, you know, their chewing, you know, their talking? How can we keep our students and our teachers safe? What kind of safety precautions could we put in place in regards to the respiratory droplets that get, you know, shared when they take their masks off in class to eat?
Yeah. So, I think the key to minimizing risk while eating is continuing to keep the total number of people in any space that are eating low, increasing ventilation, and, and maintaining distance, right? So, so, you know, just because they're eating lunch and talking to each other, we should still try to, to maintain as much distance as possible for that to happen.
Thank you.
I think that, so, the, the questions about aerosolization and contact, you know, what the, what the data we've seen shows is that the disease can live on surfaces for up to 24 hours on things like cardboard and paper. And then, in really pristine conditions, the right temperature, the, the right blockage of sunlight, because sunlight does seem to deactivate the virus to some degree, but if it's on glass or steel in the right conditions, it can last up to three days. So, I do think it's important, and, and the protocols that, that you've heard presented here today really speak to an increased frequency of cleaning and, and doing that on high-touch surfaces. And I think that's more than, more than what's needed to, to minimize the risk of contact. The other thing I'll say about that is that contact spread of the disease is actually a very small part of how this disease is spread. Some estimates are about 5% of the total transmission of COVID happens through that scenario where you've coughed on a doorknob, I grab the doorknob and rub it into my eye. So, a very low percentage of diseases transmitted that way, and frequent cleaning of high-touch surfaces should, should resolve that. Now, the respiratory droplet, you know, I think, again, eating is, is, we're going to have to figure out how to space people out and how to, how to minimize the, the total number that might be in a cafeteria. Again, the National Academy of Science guidelines really says, "Figure out how to stagger as much as you can so that you don't have a mass of kids in, in one shared large space at one time."
Yeah, we were recommending eating classrooms, but even that, that more condensed space, you know, just that question, and that kind of segues to the second piece. So, the effectiveness, the effectiveness of hand washing, the temperature of the water, tell me, talk to me about the correlation between it, because there's not a consistent, I would say, all our bathrooms aren't the same. And I know some teachers have had questions concerning the effectiveness of hand washing and the temperature of water and the correlation with the temperature and the effectiveness of hand washing.
Yeah. This, this, the presence of soap is the most important part, and soap is actually what breaks down the viral particle itself. So, hot water is better than cold water, but as long as you've got soap, you're in good shape to disinfect the virus. And then hand sanitizer, if that's going to be part of the approach, as long as there's a 60% alcohol content or greater, will be more than effective to disinfect the virus.
Thank you for sharing that insight. Dr. Cass, anyone else?
No questions for me, and I appreciate you being here and being able to answer the questions that the board members had for you now. And so we are going to resume what I know has been a long presentation. We're nearing the end. I made a comparison to a complex math problem when we're showing our work. This problem is complex, as I think those of you who have joined us and our board can see. And in examining every angle, there's so much to consider along with the health pieces. So I will turn it back over. Robyn Gilbert, if you had other things to share before you bring up the next presenter.
I too just wanted to thank Dr. Avula for sharing your expertise with us and his continued support as we move forward through this changing time. And now Ms. Francine Bowden will discuss supports that will be available for our staff.
While the School Division has the responsibility to provide a quality education for over 50,000 students, we are an employer of over 7,100 staff members. HCPS has an obligation to support staff and provide a safe workplace. Support for staff members shall take various forms to include division compliance with federal and state laws as well as local efforts. Our responsibility for ensuring safe and helpful work conditions is guided by, let me make sure, sorry about that, is guided by the Occupational Safety and Health Administration as well as Virginia Occupational Safety and Health. You've just heard from Ms. Gilbert and Mr. Pritchard regarding many of the efforts in place to comply with the requirements of these entities. With the advent of COVID-19, the federal government enacted the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which provides employees with paid sick leave and expanded family and medical leave for specified reasons related to COVID. An employee is entitled to take leave related to COVID-19 if the employee is unable to work, including unable to tell work because the employee must quarantine, is experiencing COVID-19 symptoms and is seeking a medical diagnosis, is caring for an individual who is quarantined, or is caring for a child when the school or childcare provider location has been closed. Current CDC guidance indicates that among adults, the risk for severe illness from COVID-19 increases with age, with older adults at highest risk. Falling into this category, the Division employs more than 1,200 full and part-time employees and 280 prep participants, who are our primary source of substitute teachers. HCPS is committed to addressing the health needs of these and all staff generally and in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act as applicable. With respect to local efforts, the Division will collaborate with staff to provide telework opportunities for those who may be precluded from onsite work. As issues arise, each situation will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis to facilitate the best outcomes for staff and student teaching and learning. Should a suspected exposure occur in the workplace, free COVID-19 testing is available for staff at a contracted medical facility with approval from school health services. Staff who have medical insurance through the School Division are also able to address suspected non-workplace exposures via free COVID testing through their own medical provider. If staff is not able to telework with approval, up to 80 hours of paid emergency leave may be granted. This is employer-paid leave and does not require staff to use their own accumulated sick leave. Paid emergency leave may be accessible more than once based on evidence of need related to COVID. Our staff is valued, and HCPS is committed to workplace health and safety. I will now turn the presentation back over to Dr. Tighen, who will discuss the three return-to-school models.
Now, let's look at how these three return approaches, the five-day, the hybrid, and the full-day, and the full-virtual, I'm sorry, differ. The primary differences are outlined on this slide. Three feet of distancing would be the protocol for the five-day return or more if individual enrollment and classroom arrangements would permit. And six feet or more would be the standard in the hybrid return approach. The five-day and full-virtual approaches provide five days of highly modified in-person or face-to-face instruction with teachers, getting their traditional planning time. The hybrid approach provides two days of highly modified in-person instruction and two and a half days of asynchronous virtual learning. It should be noted that the schools move from full virtual to hybrid to five-day, the number of students in the buildings grow, and with that, the likelihood of transmission of increases. Now, let's look a little bit about the impact on childcare. Staff and families are likely to encounter new childcare concerns for those with school-age children with the hybrid and full-virtual models. Based on the survey of the 1,020 staff who have elementary-age students in Henrico County Public Schools, 662 indicated interest in a low-cost childcare option. Therefore, the Division is in conversations to develop a childcare option for staff's school-age children in grades K through 5 through a partnership with the Henrico Education Foundation. Our families also shared their concerns about childcare. Nearly half of the 11,000 respondents indicated finding childcare on the alternating-day hybrid approach would be an extreme or moderate challenge for them. It is likely just as many or more would have the same struggle with the full-virtual approach. Thus, staff are also working with other providers who have traditionally partnered with Henrico County Public Schools, offering after-school care, including PALS and the YMCA. And they are working to adjust their programs to meet potential new needs. They would offer fee-based, all-day-quality programming and enrichment for families on days students are not learning in person. Wreckin' Parks is also working to partner with PALS to provide several hours of after-school programming that would be fun with purpose, as Neil Luther, the director of Wreckin' Parks, describes it. Overall, it is a community effort, though, to include our local businesses providing flexibilities to employees to meet the childcare needs in a hybrid or full-virtual approach. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to Chris Sorenson to share budget information related to the various approaches.
Thank you, Dr. Tighen. So this budget reflects the additional cost of reopening schools and does not include costs associated with the CARES Act funding. The development of this budget is similar to any other budget process. Departments developed cost estimates of reopening schools based on the most recent information and guidance available, while focusing on the priorities of safety and wellness of staff, students, and the community, maximizing equitable support systems and opportunities for high-quality instruction, support for teachers and families, and the social-emotional needs of students and staff. Estimates were then categorized into four primary areas: health monitoring and cleaning, disinfecting protocols, additional teacher and student family supports, personal protective equipment, and transportation and childcare. After the development of the expense budget, similar to the operating budget process we completed not too long ago in the spring, we shared our estimated reopening expenses with county budget staff to begin the process of identifying available funding resources, including any funds that may be provided by the Commonwealth. At this time, a funding plan has not been confirmed, but once the availability of funding is known, a total amended budget for the School Division to include the cost of reopening schools will be finalized. Budgets for all approaches, but especially the virtual approach, will be refined as additional data from staff and parent feedback is received. This data will allow us to better develop costs for the number of staff that will work from individual school buildings, as well as the health monitoring, personal protective equipment, and transportation costs for the number of students that will receive in-person support. So I'll now turn it over to Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. And I'd also like to take a minute to thank each and every one of our presenters and their respective teams for the work that they've been putting into examining so many angles of this incredibly complex situation of working towards a full return for our students. And so, as I said in the opening of the presentation, I don't think there's a rock we haven't overturned or an angle we haven't examined, again, in approaching what I know is an incredibly complex situation. And so while you saw three approaches presented, the recommendation I'm making for the first nine weeks is to take that full virtual for the majority of students while working to gradually increase opportunities for our pre-K through three students, our youngest students, to have some limited interactions in the classroom. Really, the idea, keeping, as we saw in that continuum, a focus on small, either individual returns, very small group returns, and certainly, as Dr. Avula pointed out, the studies that we do have to go by, and while limited information is out there, awfully are often based on these small group scenarios, as you shared with that information with the YMCA groups of less than 10. So this idea of a gradual return, building confidence around the safety and health mitigation strategies that we've put in place and worked very hard to put in place as we move on. So that covers our presentation, and we would invite board members to ask questions, and we can start by topic on the agenda if that's helpful. And I would say those first few items in the presentation covered things like what guidance, you know, was being considered by the team, survey data, and our back-to-school priorities. I think it'd be helpful if the agenda slide was displayed. Is that what was asked? Dr. Tighen can handle that. In fact, the DLT team's going to come up to handle those questions anyway. So questions related to those first items that were really around the guidance data and priorities that were used in creating the scenarios. Are there any questions related to that background piece, the survey, the return-to-school guidance and/or those priorities that we were examining? And the team stands ready to come forward.
Ms. Agburn, would you like to start?
Sure, absolutely. Just a couple, and I'm not sure who's to answer. Probably Mr. Jinks for one. Our survey data. I've had a number of people say to me, we have, if you look at our survey data, who answered their survey? That ultimately, it's a little bit lower than we probably would have liked when you get down to sheer numbers. But it is, some schools had a, if you look at the school data, like how many parents per school answered. We have some schools where there's a high response rate and then other schools where there's a low. So I've had the question asked by constituents, what did we do to get that survey out there? How did we encourage parents to answer it? And can we really be sure that we're hearing from enough people when there are such great differences between areas of the county that didn't respond much at all? So I'm curious, was every effort made? I'm sure there was, but I'm just curious what those efforts were to get people to respond.
I feel like we use the platforms that we have at our disposal. And so in this particular example, you have the survey system generates an email to every contact that we have on file. This is parent contact one and contact two for each of the student households, as well as the employee email addresses that we have in the county. Upon an initial round of unveiling that survey, we keep track of who hasn't completed the survey, and then those families got a second round of system-generated emails. But aside from that, there's a publicity effort that we try to at least raise the level of awareness that this information is forthcoming. And so our typical platforms are used for that, whether it's through local news, our own social media, our website, and repeated inclusions in a newsletter that goes out to inform the parent community of these things that are happening. Those are the electronic platforms at our disposal in order to communicate a thorough message in a relatively short amount of time.
And I saw it on the news. I also saw it in the paper. So I know that it was out there. So, and if anyone says that to me, I can say, it's not that we didn't try. People do have a choice whether to participate or not. So if you have sections or particular schools or whatever, it was a wide range of participation. And does that concern you at all, or?
It's, what's most concerning to me is that I think in the middle of a pandemic or even on a good day, school divisions compete with organizations for everyone's time and attention. And so we do what we can to break through and to make our messages clear and easy to understand. But at the end of the day, we're also asking a lot of people's time. A survey is a fairly good example of that. It might be one thing to raise the level of awareness that the survey exists, but then a survey also asks for 10 to 15 minutes of your time to complete it. And sometimes that can be an additional sell, if you will, rather than the mere act of reading the email in the first place. It's always concerning, of course, if a message doesn't get through or that we don't have the response that we're looking for. And so I'll choose to look on the bright side, that we had something like, I think it was around 13,000 community responses, another 6,000 from our employee population. I feel that's good. Of course, it's never perfect, it's never good enough, and we'll always strive to do better.
But suffice it to say, we can say every effort was made.
Yes.
And I think it's important that people know that, because I've had a number of people talk to me about this, and I just kind of want to just put an end to that conversation. We did the best we could to get as many responses as we could.
Short of me personally knocking on everyone's door, we did use the mass communication platforms at our disposal.
Well, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And the next one, I just have one for Dr. Tighen. The next slide, the return, I'm trying to, yeah, it's right here. Virginia Department of Education. I've had a number of constituents ask this question, and just if you could sort of generally talk about the guidance from the VDOE. I've had a number of people say, why don't we just send the kids back to school for three hours a day, just do reading, math, science, and history, and send them home? Why, you know, cover that core instruction. And I know the answer, but if you could just address it, because this is one I get a lot.
Yes, ma'am. I know there has been, you know, recommendations to narrow the curriculum, and the state has been very clear that the expectation is we're still providing our students with all of the curriculum that is expected within the state. And so that's included music, art, library, science, health, and PE. So those are things that are not, you know, even in the pandemic, they're not less, you know, there's not a lower level of emphasis on them. They're just as important as everything else. And so the expectation is we are teaching everything that's required. You know, when you think about, especially at the high school level, when you get to a diploma, they're not waiving the diploma requirements.
Right.
And when you think about elementary age, you know, there are still standards of quality that we are expected to adhere to.
And so it wouldn't be reasonable to suggest that we suspend the standards of quality or suspend any of our requirements. It wouldn't be something that the DOE would allow us to do, first of all, and would not be in the best interest of our students to ask that.
They haven't suspended those yet, you know, at this point.
Right. Exactly.
I say the response that I know other divisions have received, who have indicated they were going to cut certain curriculum, was that that was not acceptable.
All right. Thank you.
I think I saw your hand next, Ms. Consella.
Yeah. How far are we going down to what, back to school, Charlie?
We're happy to take questions that you may have, any questions. If it's easier just to go board member by board member this way, Mr. Chairman, I'll leave it to you for the order of how you prefer.
I was just saying to the superintendent that it's kind of disjointed as far as we don't have it out of mind, so why don't we just, you know?
I was just doing it through priorities. I'm sorry.
Why don't we save the model questions, like about the specific models, and do another round with that? Because I think, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Well, then I have a couple on health and safety. Are we doing down to health? Do you want to do?
Yeah, you take, the floor is yours.
I have a couple on health and safety, and then I'll stop. Sure.
Can we stop for a moment so that we also better understand what our next steps are, just for the grace of the audience here.
Your mic, please.
I just want to take a moment just to make sure that we're all on the same page on how we're asking questions and sharing information for the audience and for those who are watching and trying to follow the flow. I just want to pose that if we stick to the agenda items and provide questions and comments as we go down each one, we can also avoid having, just going to pick on you, Andy, come up 50 million times. If we stay with the agenda.
I would agree with that.
I think that our audience and those virtually, and I see heads nodding, that that makes a little more sense to digest so much information.
I would think so.
In the interest of time as well.
So then what we'll do is, so we're on survey data. Does anyone else have survey data? Ms. Consella.
Is survey data a priority?
Certainly. All right. All right. I did guidance and survey, that's all I did.
So let's follow Ms. Agburn's piece. We're going to start with. We're going to start with guidance and data, and then we'll do priorities and protocols and health. So we're taking the two, first two stars. So Ms. Cancela.
Okay. This is for Andy about survey?
He's coming back.
And I would also mention that Dr. Tygen oversees our research and planning department who developed the survey. And so there's development, and there's advertisement and distribution force. So that's why I think they both keep moving forward when survey comes up, but they're both available and happy to answer questions.
Well, I'm not sure which, so I'll just let y'all, I'll let y'all fight over it. I'm concerned in looking at the parent response, especially, like we already addressed, across the county, it wasn't the same rate, given some schools. But I had two schools, I had an elementary school with only 50 that responded, and then I had a high school where my other high school replied twice as many. And, I mean, a high school that only had 428 respondents, I find low, especially when the other high school in my district had twice as many. What do we attribute that to? Do we know? Have we thought about it? Did we only translate it into Spanish?
Spanish? Yes, the survey was translated into Spanish, and the same protocols were used as far as the contacts in the student in power school were used to identify those households where Spanish is the home language. And there was a second round of information that went out for those families who had not responded by the time the second message went out.
Do, do we think maybe we need to expand the communication? I don't know what's involved with that, but just so that we're reaching more of our populations, our EL populations?
If I might mention, one of the advantages we have during the school year or during more traditional situations, even in a traditional summer, our school administrators and teachers are often very key in helping us advertise directly to families and know how to engage families. And so that's something we were absent of this time. And so while I think Mr. Jenks pointed out, our overall response rate was incredibly high and much higher than we've had, even when some of those best efforts are employed, we did see that we weren't reaching everyone and made every effort to do that. Many times, our contacts in our buildings who work with our students, who have different languages spoken at home, will often be able to provide assistance to know that there's a document. And so that could be translated into a different language that we may not have mass generated. And so in this case, we're missing some of those interactions, and we recognize that.
In such case, I'd just like to put it on everyone's radar, wherever we go forward today after the vote, that that's going to be a priority, depending on how we're learning for the fall. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I had.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cancela. Ms. Shay, do you have anything in regards to guidance and survey data?
I think so. I'm not really sure what falls where, but, you know, first, I know that this has been a long presentation, and the public, you know, is really just waiting to get to the meat of it. But I hope this has really painted the picture of truly the sheer amount of work that our leadership team has done, developing a whole myriad of plans and all the options and thinking through all the contingencies. And I cannot thank y'all enough for your truly tireless work this summer on it and very, very, very long hours. So my main question, which a lot of my constituents have asked me, is for you to articulate the data used to make your recommendation, you know, specifically, instead of just referring to health data, a little bit more specific on what that data was, and/or articulate what changed between the town hall on Tuesday and the recommendation on Monday.
And as I, as I shared in the presentation, we were using the data, one of the main, other than the anecdotal data coming from surveys and focus groups, the initial metric we were looking at was the positivity rate, and we were using Johns Hopkins for the state of Virginia. You know, believe, you know, personally, my belief system is that when you look at just Henrico, that's, that's not an accurate reflection of our community because of how many in our community live and might live one place and work in another. And so there is some level around the state of travel, just within normal, you know, day-by-day operations within families. With that positivity level, we knew that the governor was looking at data, and we looked at what was the average rate when we transitioned from phase two to phase three. And that was down at four and a half percent, the average. As of Monday, that had grown, you know, to, over 2.3% increase, and I say that meaning not an, you know what I mean mathematically, that we went from, exactly from, you know, so that that, that metric is going up. And so, you know, we look at, what is that telling us about trends? You know, and so that was one. But like I say, just as important was what our staff and our families were also telling us with, you know, emails we received, phone calls, the focus groups were powerful as far as, you know, a lot of our staff, not only as staff, they are also some of our families that have children in our system. And so, you know, it was the combination of the two that changed the, well, and really, that was the first we came out with a stance. You know, no decision had been made prior to that. We were using our survey data as what families were telling us. But more and more families and staff were telling us, I would, I would respond differently now, as they were hearing what was happening with the cases around, you know, the state.
Thank you so much for articulating that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Shay. Mrs. Atkins, anything on guidance and data better?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one point. When we are looking at data, I know there are some data analysts in the room, and they know as well as I do that sometimes in the way in which you survey, it's a point-in-time answer. And also taking into consideration, when we're in the middle of a crisis, in the middle of a pandemic, many families are working, and many families are trying to get their families fed, and the survey wasn't a top priority. And I am particularly speaking on behalf of the Holland Springs, Sandston, and Verona District. And so when I look at my numbers, I take into consideration more than just what I see in that survey, because I understand that there are many families that are having to make a decision in 10, 15 minutes whether to take this survey or do something else. And so I want to just say to both of you that I'm grateful that you recognize, one, the need, the ability to flip it around in such a short period of time. There's no such perfect survey, but there is the opportunity to take a point-in-time data, and this is one of the reasons why, if I go in my community and I say, had you taken that survey today, would have been different, and the response is yes. So it's important to me that when I look at data, I am looking at it at that particular point in time when that survey was distributed, and then I'm making decisions as time goes on to evaluate the changes that are taking place since the survey. And so I just want to acknowledge and recognize that the tremendous amount of work that goes into understanding the data elements, the particular words that are used in a survey, it takes a lot of time. And I just want to thank you both for that. I'm speaking directly to the Verona District, I hear you. Not everyone has time to be at home or are homemakers to sit there and take their survey. And that's why it's incredibly important for myself to do more than just look at those survey data results and understand the differences between districts. But thank you both for your, for your responses.
Well, kind of to, you know, Ms. Atkins's point on that regard, and I think as we look at our surveys, we have to look at the response rate, right? We have to look at the response rate, we have to look at where the responses are coming from, because if we traditionally receive a deluge of information from two of the five districts or three of the five districts, then it gets distilled to an equity issue. So if we, if we're using the data, then it's driven by those persons who did understand it or those persons who did have time to take it, and it kind of puts at a disadvantage others, other residents and districts who may not respond. So I guess my charging challenge would be, as we, you know, distill this information in regards to response rates, you know, who's responding, where it's coming from, that we don't just accept, you know, I'm not saying we do, I'm just saying I'm putting out there, that we don't accept that as normative behavior. We need to come up with some creative ways as well to figure out how to capture the data. You know, if we know that historically, that the response rates from certain districts are not as great, and that persons are not filling them out. So as we go forward, as Ms. Cancela alluded to, you know, the different languages, I just want to talk about Ms. Dr. Cashwell, just from a staffing perspective, what we can do creatively to figure out how to get the data and make it more equitable in regards to the voices that we hear. Because one of my colleagues, Ms. Ogborne, always says, you know, you might have 50-some-thousand kids, but you have 30-some-thousand families that we represent, and if you have a snapshot of a few of those families, then therefore, it's not the majority, it's the minority, it's not the macro, it's the, it's the, it's the micro. And so I just want it to be always equitable around the five districts so that we can kind of get that big picture. And so that's just kind of what I think on the survey data. All right, so we've gotten survey data guidance. Let's move to priorities and health and safety protocols. I'm going to start to my left with Ms. Atkins. Ms. Atkins, would you like to share questions or concerns in regards to school priorities, health, and safety protocols?
I do. I want to talk a little bit about the isolation rooms. I'll start there.
Speak to your mic.
I'll start a little bit with the isolation rooms. Can you give me an idea of what that looks like? Is that going to be, have a look and feel of a nurse office?
Yes, I would, I would equate it to a second clinic in the school. While there's still the, the actual clinic that needs to operate as a clinic, if there is a student or a staff member that presents with symptoms that are COVID-like, then they would be put in a separate area where there would be cots, and our nursing staff would have the appropriate personal protective equipment to be supporting that staff member or that student, assess what little they can with, you know, within their realm of what, what their, their scope of their work. And then to be able to transfer those individuals out of the building, you know, either with a parent or a family member, or, you know, a staff member could drive. But it's, it's isolated so that we're not bringing in anything that we think might be COVID into the clinic where kids are coming in for routine medications, maybe a Band-Aid, some ice. And so it's almost like having two clinics in the school.
Thank you. I know I got that question quite a bit, just because families were asking, well, is it an isolation room just for health? Is it an isolation room for behavior? But I wanted you to speak to that. And I think it's just the word isolation room that sometimes comes across feeling cold versus saying we're going to have two nurse offices, and one is specifically for X.
And I would just point out that as part of our health medication plan, we had to be clear that it was a health isolation room, and never have we tried to separate those two words, so I appreciate you bringing that up. And we want to be clear as part of the guidelines for mitigating health and safety is to have a health isolating space, operating much like a second clinic. And so it's important those two words stay together, so we don't inadvertently give the wrong impression.
Absolutely.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. And the other question I had was around the sneeze guards. I saw that they would be in the office. Are they also going to be in the nurse office and cafeteria?
I'm good.
We're working on areas of high-volume traffic, obviously. The cafeteria would be one as well, and that's something that we're looking at. The, the main focus moving forward would be the office, some attendance offices because they're detached away from the main office itself and school counseling. And simple supply and demand is going to dictate a lot of that as well. I'm getting plexiglass in. We've gotten some, and we've started cutting molds out already to start fitting in office spaces. As more becomes available, then we can look at putting more in other places such as cafeteria.
Fantastic, because I'm aware of this shortage of the plexiglass, and there's also an alternative that is coming about now that's a heavy demand as well. And so I know that plexiglass that you see in the grocery stores, there's a new alternative to that, and I didn't know if you were aware, it's more costly, but I wanted to share that with you, and if you wanted more information about that, I'm happy to provide that to you.
Please.
Can you give me an estimate on when you anticipate the additional plexiglass coming in?
It just depends. I mean, some of it's come in, some of it, we're hoping that we would be, at least have the office and school counseling places taken care of before the start of school in September, and by September 8th. But that, that just depends. I mean, you're at the mercy of local businesses, competing for the same products as well.
And so how are the decisions made on what areas get the plexiglass first?
Well, right now, it's just basically your high-traffic areas of potential exposure. I mean, main office, your high-traffic areas where the public comes into the schools, asks questions, and they are sent to primarily like school counseling. So those are two areas that would be done. And then, like I said, when you go to certain schools, depending upon the layout, you have attendance offices that are totally different from the main office that would require that as well.
I would ask to consider that before the guidance counselor gets the plexiglass, that the nurse office gets it.
That would be considered as well.
And just something for you to consider, and also, let me...
Can I just address, like, the health isolation rooms and the need for barriers or anything? Our nursing staff, if there's anyone that has COVID-like symptoms and would be in that health isolation area, which is where they should be, the nurse there will have health-grade PPE. And so that includes an N95 mask, face shield, you know, so that they, there wouldn't be a need for other plexiglass. I mean, they will be wearing the personal protective equipment that they need to be in that room.
Thank you for sharing that. I will share with you that I've had several nurses reach out to me that have, that are concerned that they're not receiving, and they've heard that they may not receive that plexiglass. So I just want you to take that into consideration.
Thank you for the feedback.
Because I think it's important for you to know that.
Yes, ma'am.
Ultimately, you'll make that final decision. Let's see. So this is a question that I don't know, Dr. Tygen, that you would be able to address in this setting, and if not, that's, that's fine. The question is around inequities, of course, around our healthcare systems. Usually, traditionally, at the beginning of the year, our families come home with a packet, and in that packet is information around healthcare services. I'd like for you guys to consider offering that same level of information and services in that, you know, not the packet, but there's two forms there, and the name of the form's failed me now. But given certainly inequities in our healthcare system, I think it's important for you and others to consider sending that form home ahead of time for those families that don't have healthcare or, of course, is inequitable in certain areas. So that was my last feedback and my last thought around that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Shay?
Thank you. Just to piggyback on Ms. Atkins's question about the plexiglass, one of you at some point in the presentation said that our PPE supplies have been ordered, but not all yet have been received. Is that a delay, or was our, or have we not hit our projected delivery date? Does that make sense? Like, were they already promised and they're not here yet? Or have we not gotten to that date?
I can speak to some of that because we have a number of orders, and certainly, I think, you know, we were asked what data points led to the decision for the, how we should open the school year the first nine weeks, and this is a key factor. And so while the health mitigation plans that Dr. Avula and the Virginia Department of Health read and approve of, based on our strategies, they call for a number of supplies to be present, and things like not only the plexiglass in those high-use spaces, but the face coverings and things that we would provide, both to our staff and our families. And so while all of the projected delivery dates are prior to school starting, some of those delivery dates have come and gone, and we also don't have confidence that we'll be able to meet those deadlines. Dr. Tygen, do you want to speak any to the delivery? Did that cover it?
That basically covered it. As things are changing in the country, so are delivery dates and expectations.
That is concerning. Hand washing, I love the increase of hand washing. And, you know, from an elementary school standpoint, where we have a lot of classes with sinks in the classroom, you know, I, that was going to be easier to facilitate. But what is that going to look like at the high school level when there's one bathroom for 15 classes? What's the logistics to, can that truly happen?
I think a lot around the hand washing, regardless of we're talking pre-K or we're talking high school, is about really educating families and our students about the need to wash their hands. I mean, our high school kids, they do go to the restrooms throughout the day, and so knowing, you know, reiterating every time they're in that restroom, they're washing hands. If there's certain times of the day... If there's certain times of the day that you can work in, you know, a specific time to hand wash, like you're on your way to get lunch, that's a great time that you should be washing your hands. And so, it, it will be an educational push as well, that how important that is.
Thank you. What is our health screening gonna look like?
There's a number of questions that staff, are you talking, well, there's, there's multiple levels, because there's staff, there's students, and there's visitors.
I would say mostly for our students, what will it look like?
Students' parents will be given the symptoms of COVID, so that they'll be able to run down those and make sure that their child does not, is not exhibiting any of those symptoms, and asking them to take the temperature every morning. And if they have a fever, encouraging them, expecting them to keep their children home. I mean, it's what Dr. Avula said. You know, those mitigation factors that can occur in the home before they ever come to school is going to be imperative to keeping schools open.
I think that's gonna require a significant education campaign to, to our parents and families on how critically important it is.
And we've talked about even with school supply lists, putting thermometers on that, so that families know that's something they need. And in addition to that, we will have random temperature checks of both staff and students in our building during the day.
I assume with a no-touch thermometer, if we have one?
Yes, ma'am.
Lenny, this one's for you.
Please come back.
You know, looking at a return to buildings, you know, we know that ventilation and air circulation is such a, gonna be such a critical part of, of keeping these droplets at bay. What about our schools without windows and with aging HVAC and their ability to circulate the air? I know we talked about flushing on a call earlier. And you mentioned in your presentation, ensuring the ventilation is working properly. But we have quite a few aging HVAC systems.
Okay.
Right? And that, you know, may or may not be super reliable or super robust for the air circulation. So, what's, you know, those, that's a big-ticket budget item. So, you know, do we have the budget for adequate repairs?
Well, it's a very good question. The answer would be, we will find a way to make that part of it work and get it fixed. I mean, we're not gonna sit there in total freezing temperatures or total hot temperatures. I mean, it becomes a priority that's gotta get done, if it's moving money around. I know that you brought up, let's go back to the part with the school with no windows. Not necessarily sure, because each school's HVA system is, is designed differently to meet the needs of that specific building that it was built by the architectural design. So, just kind of some common practice with their own households as well, having your air conditioner running and then opening up your windows with all the hot air and humidity coming in is gonna put a huge strain on your HVA system, not, to make it work not properly. So...
I tell my kids that every day.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, it's something that we would recommend as well. I know that we are gonna monitor the HVA systems daily, as we always do. You know, we have alarms that are set off when something's not right, not working properly. We're able to address those concerns and get them fixed as soon as, as possible. We are gonna monitor those on a day-to-day basis. We are going to work on, there's a part of putting your, your system in a non-occupied mode into occupied mode. We're gonna run our systems more to keep the air moving and circulating, rather than cutting it off at certain times where it goes dead. And if you've been in a building at, you know, in the afternoon, it's like right, at the high school level, the bell would ring at 3:55, at 4 o'clock, you could just hear the vacuum just suck right out of the room. To keep that air circulating and going, we're gonna run our systems a lot longer. So, so that we'll help with that.
Let's hope.
Yes, let's hope.
All right. That's all I have on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shay. Ms. Consella, anything around return-to-school priorities, health and safety protocols?
Yes, I'm just, we're just kind of skipping. It's, it's just arranged differently than anticipated. Let's see. I appreciate Ms. Atkins addressing the Plexiglas, because I can think of numerous places in a school I'd like to see it, not just the most with the high traffic. With three secondary kids in my house, and just knowing, knowing how they are, in addition to hearing parental feedback, is our cleaning scenario still the same for expecting kids to clean?
What we've put forward in our health and mitigation plan, if we were to bring groups of students back into our building, and they were to be following at the secondary level their bell schedule with changes, with class changes, you know, we would have to rely on the ability for students to be able to wipe their space if we were to provide, you know, we can't have a cleaning crew cleaning between spaces. So, for an extra level of assurance, you know, we have ordered, you know, the spray and paper towels and wipes that we want to be readily available all over the school at any time they may need to be used. But, you know, we know that that presents some challenges. And so, the, the challenges, and the larger that group of students is in a room, the harder that would be to oversee and maintain. You know, and so, while it's not a requirement that, that space be cleaned after the student gets up and leave, we would want to be able to add that as a layer of, of, of health and safety. But it did, you know, appear in our focus groups, that, that was a, a main point of contention, was being concerned about how to manage the changing from class to class and the feeling of comfort and safety as a new student would come to a desk that another student had just left.
Okay, thank you. And just health and safety right now, not...
Doing whatever falls under purview of the return-to-school priorities, health and safety. Because like, for instance, under the return-to-school priorities, Beth, could you put that slide on, up the blue, and that shows the return-to-school priorities? Because there's a lot under that, you know, you might want to get...
And I would just add, we're happy to take questions. Many overlap very much into other areas. So, if you'd just like to share questions you have regardless of the topic.
Actually, what, well...
That, that all falls under purview.
If I would, if I would ask a question about had the staff potentially, when they thought about the options that we're gonna be looking at shortly, had we thought about something creative, given the low spread that we know kids have? For example, sending children in the school, letting teachers work virtually from home, and just having, having monitors and repurposing, and a strategy where maybe we, because I don't think we're furloughing anyone, feel free to, to correct me on that. But as we repurpose folks whose jobs, depending on the strategy, may not be the same, has anyone ever entertained anything outside the box like that? Sending kids in a building and letting staff work from home potentially, since kids have such low spread?
Well, and I think when you say kids, you were talking about the younger age groups, under 10 potentially. And so, we recognize that any time students would be coming into the building, whether they're in a classroom with their classroom teacher, or some other staff member who's been assigned, that same potential risk factor would be there. But what we do know is that there are a number of families who, if we're in a virtual setting, have indicated that need for an adult supervision, maybe not an instructor. So, when we've looked at our partnerships with HEF and PALS and the YMCA, the thought was very much that, that students might go into those settings and remember childcare licensing looks a little different than classroom numbers, and those numbers are low, as you've heard in the YMCA example. And the licensed childcare staff for one of these organizations, whether it be in one of our school buildings or on another site, would be able to do just that, monitor students who might be learning online. Certainly with the partners we work with on a regular basis, the Education Foundations Program that they have, have run in some of our schools, their Learning and Discovery, as well as with our Police Athletic Leave, they often collaborate with us to see how the activities and enrichment things they're doing line up with our curriculum. This would mirror that type of thing, where we would be able to provide them some guidance, their staff, their childcare staff, on how to best maximize the day to line up with some of the online learning that's happening.
And then, let's see, technology. I've heard from constituents that even if they have internet, it, it, it lags. It cannot keep up with potentially a hybrid learning scenario or a 100% virtual scenario. Do we have any solution for that? Perhaps hotspots for, for those families?
We absolutely have the hotspots. And we want to make sure that anyone who would need to have access to the internet would have that, and we'll plan to make sure we overly communicate that, the availability. And we've actually been doing that through spring, so we have a pretty good idea of families who, who have that need. And I think to your other point, you know, even with Wi-Fi and a hotspot and/or great connection, things happen, and we know that. And so, we'll be encouraging our teachers, as they're creating their virtual classrooms, to think about ways to capture material through video recording times where they're using live instruction in Schoology, so it's available for a student who might have lost connectivity to get, get later, or any number of reasons that we know things could go wrong. And so, we will want to provide that flexibility. And certainly would point out that, you know, the idea has, has never been that, as some have characterized it, that a student would be sitting in front of a computer screen for hours on end. You know, the students may be receiving some instruction that way, one-on-one from a teacher, or getting assignments delivered that way. But the idea that they would have independent work to do, and things that might be paper, pencil, creative assignments and other things like that would be a part of the day, not all relying on an internet connection.
That's all I had. Mr. Chair.
So, for me, I've got a quick couple of questions. Can you clarify, Dr. Tygen, will teachers be able to work virtually from their classrooms? Are they working from home?
They will have the ability to be in their classrooms. And if they need to be home, they have the flexibility to do that. You know, the expectation is that they're, they're teaching their students from wherever is most convenient for them. And we've heard from many teachers that have asked that they teach from their classroom because of their supplies, the whiteboards, the resources. And we want to make it as easy as possible for our teachers and as good as possible for our students.
And that's one reason we covered in our health mitigation strategy plans, you know, knowing our buildings are open, if not by appointment for the public, but for, and/or for teachers to come in, regardless of the number of students we're serving at any time. Once our buildings are open, all of those protocols are in place, no matter the number of individuals or the age of the individuals coming into our building. That would include our staff.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. So, my next couple series kind of fall into maximizing equitable support systems and opportunities for high-quality instruction. First question is around kind of childcare supervision, concerns for working families in single-parent households. I've read that some parents in the more affluent communities throughout my district and other districts are using or pooling resources and creating learning pods, or hiring personal learning coaches to provide extra support for some children. What, what kind of strategy could we provide to ensure equitable learning is occurring throughout the districts for the families who don't have those options?
And I think part of that is our relationships with the organizations that have been in our schools, that we've talked about with PALS and YMCA and HEF, because they're people who come to the table with us and sit down and want to design a program that supports what we're working to do. You know, I think some of the flexibility that Dr. Cashwell talked about, as far as being able to record lessons and so on, that gives families some flexibility, that if they need it to look at those lessons in the evening. You know, there's, equity is going, you know, to be a significant concern with any, any pathway we're taking. And we've got to be very deliberate thinking about what we do to help mitigate any issues.
Thank you, Dr. Tygen, for that. And next one is kind of around food insecurity. The grab-and-go sites have been a valuable resources for many of our families. And with many working parents, the pickup times during the actual school year will sometimes be difficult to navigate. And so, the question I raise, do, do we have any bandwidth to provide flexibility for, like, for instance, a one-day, all-day pickup to receive breakfast and lunch for an entire week, so that it's not a, a daily distribution, but they could kind of get the food, breakfast or lunch? Just for example, like 7 to 6, you know, and then be able to get it for the week? Do we have that, that bandwidth to do that?
I, I will not speak for Mr. Sorensen, but I would say flexibility has been the, the key throughout all of this.
Indeed, it has. We are working, School Nutrition is working to see if we can pick up, set up different pickup times at school. Over the summer, we did it from 11 to 12. At the minimum, we want to expand that, but also to explore after-school hours, because kids will be in instruction during the school day, so have an opportunity for families to pick up the meals after the school day. Or, or deliver. We are working on, because we, we do want to utilize our school bus drivers, we are looking at delivering meals into the community as well, to assist with that.
Well, that's, that's awesome, because I, I think, you know, I think the fear and the trepidation from a lot of staff members who are non-teachers is, what about my job, right? If we go virtual, I'm, I'm a cafeteria worker, I'm a bus driver, you know, what are the, the safeguards that I know that I will be, you know, have a job? And I think that we need to come up with creative ways to ensure that they, they're engaged and they're able to continue in that regard. So, the next one for me is social emotional support. Without a doubt, virtual learning will provide, even if it's hybrid, additional stress to our children. Many children are feeling isolated from friends, anxiety, depression will heighten, and many of our children are living in stressed and traumatized homes. So, what type of social emotional support, you know, as far as virtual check-ins, home visits with appropriate PPEs, telehealth? And do we have the capacity with our current school mental health teams, or we have the ability to deal with community-based health organizations to help us to ensure that no child is left behind, no child is, is in a crack, but has the support that they need socially and emotionally in this context?
Yes. So, yes, to answer both of your questions, we have been working very hard, as we call it, our SEALs team, our school, social, emotional, academic learning support team, to think about all of the supports beyond academics that we know students are gonna need. And I believe I called out, you know, some students on the slide earlier that may not have, you know, difficulties with feeding and clothing and things such as that. But we know there's a group of students that are starting school for the first time, our kindergartners, our first graders. We know that we have students leaving, you know, elementary school and going to middle school. And that's something that we usually can give face-to-face support to, and that's going to look different depending on our model. And like you said, beyond that, we also know that we have students that did not engage in school necessarily in the spring, to the manner in which we would have liked to. And we know that we want to make sure that we have those students on board and engaging right from the very beginning. So, we have a group of employees, like you said, our school-based mental health teams, that are working feverishly for plans on working closely with schools from the very beginning, to make sure that all of our students are engaging, that we know where all of our students are, and that for some reason, if they're not engaging, or even if they are engaging and need help beyond those academics or the social emotional supports that we have throughout the school day, that we can assist them. So, our school counselors, our social workers, our attendance officers, we have deans of students, we have behavior support specialists. That whole team is getting ready to do a visioning session next week, to really look at exactly what each ones of their roles can be, and then how they can work together as a team to support our students. Because we know that school may look different, no matter the model or the approach that we choose. And we know that students are gonna need support from us and also from the community. And so, what wraparound services we can combine together to, to make school effective and to really provide support for families. And of course, we have our family engagement office as well, and, you know, Monica Manns, all of us will band together to really, boots on the ground, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the students. And I think that will start with the schools providing us clear data on who's engaging and who's not engaging, and what the students' needs are.
No, I definitely appreciate the approach. If I can just borrow something that Ms. Atkins said earlier in regards to medicine, it's, it's one thing to have it, but to not have access to it. So, as you all are having those conversations, and as you, you know, dilute it to the school level, can you just make sure that we figure out the best way to communicate what we will have available for our students and families, so that they know what's available and they can access it? Because that sounds great, and it sounds like we want to, you know, speak to the whole child, speak to the whole family from a community engagement part, and, and equity, access and opportunity. But if it's out there, but I don't have access to it, I don't know how to get it, then therefore, it doesn't benefit me.
Yes.
And for me, I'm just speaking, I know my district more so than others. I have more schools than others who are not fully accredited. I have more schools that are Title I. So, for me, I worry about that segmentation of my population, making sure that they're not lost during whichever route we choose to go. And, and I need to make sure I'm advocating for them.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for those points. And I'll make sure I share your feedback with the school-based mental health teams as well. And, you know, I'm happy to sit down and talk with anybody about specific needs or beyond what we, we thought of today, to make sure that we can ensure our community that we can get them what they need.
Thank you, Dr. Hughes. Anything else with a quick question?
My turn.
Yes?
Can we go to the health, the next couple over? The protocols one?
Let me see.
I think that...
Is this, this one?
Which one you want?
One more. That one.
Oh.
Okay. Earlier, Mr. Pritchard said, things will be cleaned between uses. And so, I, I'm just imagining a kindergarten class, let's say they're in, and they've used... used markers, they've used various things. I don't think many parents feel comfortable having their kids use cleaning materials to clean in between. So that means it is going to fall to our teachers to add that to their long list of things. And I'm trying to extrapolate that, what that looks like. And as a former teacher, I can tell you, Ms. Shay, you'll hear me on this one, trying to do that when you have a mass of children in your classroom, even if we did small groups, would be so incredibly hard. I just cannot imagine
Yes.
That it would be effective.
Yes.
That it would be possible. And then your hands are wet, you've got chemicals, you've got kids, and it's just, I mean, seriously.
Yes.
This is one of my big things. And I think about what our teachers are asked to do on a daily basis, and we're adding this on top. Just does me in. But anyway. So would we be, obviously, the younger they are, the less they can do this. I know the high school kids, obviously, if you have a tub of wipes right there, you can say, just wipe the top of your desk, whatever, wipe your desk before you exit. That takes not a lot of time. It can dry in between. But I do worry too about exposure to these kind of cleaning agents to our children. And I know that one of the things on here is increased cleaning of buses' classroom surfaces. So in between groups, let's not even talk about cleaning markers in between, you know, uses. But I know that buses are sprayed with chemicals, surfaces are sprayed. Are we going to, I mean, I know y'all can't answer this question, but I envision 20 years from now, kids going, well, we're the group that in 2020 were exposed to X, Y, and Z. That's the thing I keep thinking about that really bothers me. So I don't know what we're getting guidance on this, what's safe, what's not.
The disinfectants that we use are ones that are approved by the CDC, and they're approved for safe use in schools, as well as effective on the coronavirus. It also is the disinfectants we have been using prior to this, you know, what our standard is.
The ones we wish we bought stock in those companies last February.
Yes, ma'am. And I also tell you, there was, there has been a difference in conversation about elementary children versus secondary children. Because with the elementary students, you know, when you talk about desk and so on, I mean, the expectation is the elementary students are staying in their classroom all day, you know. And so the art teacher would come into their classroom to teach the art lesson, the music teacher would come in. And so there isn't the changeover during the day that there is at the secondary, where they're moving from one class to another for four classes over the course of the day. And so it was the secondary students
Sure.
who we had more faith in, in the ability to teach them how to clean their desks
Right.
and provide the supplies that they needed, not the elementary.
And I would just point out, Mrs. Auger, to your question, we certainly wouldn't expect our elementary teachers to be cleaning at the end of the day when their classroom leaves. Those spaces would be cleaned by our custodial team. But you absolutely point out excellent, you know, considerations related to trying to keep up with the many touched surfaces in a classroom during the day. But the protocols and the guidelines really related to preventing the spread of COVID mean that after one group of students leave a space, it would be cleaned, rather than, that's the reason we talk about, you know, even in-person school looking so different than it ever did before. And so this would mean elementary groups of students, if in person in a larger group, would remain in the same space all day. They'd be bringing their own markers and crayons, and they would be bagged and not shared throughout the day, and just a very different in-class environment than what had been traditionally expected.
Right.
Dr. Cashwell, just to read between the lines there, so you're saying that the expectation for kids inside the building for elementary school is essentially to remain at the same desk?
In order for us to maintain the health and mitigation safety plan that we put forward, yes, that would mean that. Because otherwise, anytime there was switching of spaces, there would be that cleaning. And there is no way that we could expect our teachers to be doing that all day long.
And we could not therefore meet physical distancing of three to six feet.
I think that is... That's right. They'd have to remain in their seated area, which would be, you know, we heard about the three to six feet being important. And even if it's three, you know, the idea would be that we couldn't have students changing spaces frequently, or we wouldn't be able to meet the distancing guideline or the cleaning guidelines.
And I know there, I'm sorry.
Just, I think that is such a critical point for parents to understand, the picture of a six-year-old or a seven-year-old being requested or required because of the necessary health mitigation strategies to keep them safe, of the expectation of being at the same desk for the majority of an entire school day. That is a vastly different picture than the best practices we have and what school looks like now in a whole different environment. And our families have to understand that is what building education would look like.
Families have to understand the difference between guidelines and what's mandatory and all of that stuff. And we have guidelines. I mean, obviously, there is no book sitting on a shelf that says, here is how you deal with a pandemic. We don't have that. So we are doing the best that we can. Every school system is doing this, every family is doing this. Sort of, you're creating the best plan that you can to keep your family safe, whether they're in your house or out of your house. And when we have, as a society, I guess, come up with this list, we are beholden to meet that. And if we can't, then we've got a decision to make that says and admits that we can't. And if I can't imagine keeping a group of first graders six feet apart, and I know if any of you have seen the video that's online now of a teacher who did the paper hands so that the kids could high-five each other, I mean, it is hilarious. Six feet apart, high-fiving each other with paper hands. I mean, you can do it, there are ways to do it, but with five kids at a time or something like that, which is to your point of your recommendation of having small groups. But I look at this as job number one for us, health and safety protocols. This is the most important slide we have. And we are talking about the health and safety of our children, and our adults who are going in the building, is our number one job. And so I look at this as going, okay, this is the protocol, this is what we have to follow, but not have to, but should, and to keep everybody safe. And then they can go home and be safe if we do this. But I don't know, I just, anyway, okay, I'm sorry, got on a tangent there.
Real quick, let me do a follow-up. Dr. Tiggen, speak to McKinney-Vento. How would McKinney-Vento families be supported with virtual learning?
Okay, I'm going to ask Leslie to step in. I know she's the expert in this area.
Well, to your point, exactly like they've been supported now, as far as the services they receive and receive and the guidelines that we have to follow. But again, we know these are unprecedented times, and we know that we're not going to be able to have, wait for the families to come to us and ask help. We're going to have to reach out to them constantly. Towards the end of school, during the COVID closure, the McKinney-Vento staff called every family, tried to visit every family. Once, they've been trying to keep in contact with families over the summer, families that we can't find any longer. We've tried to reach out to localities and community partners to see if we can find the families, and that will continue. But once we know exactly what we're up against as far as our school reopening, we'll ramp up even more, make sure we continue to have those weekly visits, phone calls, working closely with, again, Dr. Manns, and working closely with our family advocates to really make sure that we have a pulse on the families. What do they need, not only to be successful in school, but what do they need in their homes? Do they need food? Do they need clothes? Do they need wraparound services, medicine? Can we get them to doctors? So I think it will just be imperative for us to know our families well, know where they're living, know their situations, and know how we can help them on a daily basis.
Thank you so much.
Because for many of our students in those situations, academics aren't really their first priority sometimes.
And I can cheer that our school administrators know who their families are, and they have done an excellent job of making sure they've communicated needs to those, whether it's Adrienne Cole Johnson or members of her team. And there's been an all-out effort to make sure support is provided where it's needed. We've also partnered with the Department of Social Services to get information of where there are needs and how we can help.
Thank you, Dr. Tiggen. Thank you, Dr. Hughes. Dr. Tiggen, could you please put the agenda slide back up on the screen for me, please, if you don't mind? Next, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next, we will move to professional learning, refining pre-K through 12 approaches to learning. I will start to my left, Ms. Atkins, again.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a few questions around professional learning. I'd like to hear more about a plan around culture and equity training. What does that look like? What is the plan for implementation? And how are we going to continually assess how effective it is? Because right now, more than ever, staff has an opportunity to make such a big difference. But unless we provide that effective training for equity, then they can't be as successful as they could be. So I'd love to hear what that plan looks like.
Absolutely. So as you heard earlier, when I shared the HCPSU rollout, if you will, one of the courses that's available is our Equity Series. And that really starts to have conversations with educators around what it means to be a culturally relevant educator. As you know, we get lots of questions a lot about the curriculum, and is the curriculum culturally relevant? But then we, it's our job as a school division to give teachers resources so that they can be culturally responsive to the students who are in their classroom, right? So we can build the curriculum, but then we need to help the teachers with tools to be able to respond to the students who are sitting in their classrooms, their diverse needs and their cultures. So the Equity Series, teachers have already begun to dig into, it's in school ag now, and there are courses in there such as how to meet the diverse needs of learners around RTI, how to meet the needs of English language learners in the RTI process, or how to meet the cultural needs of students in your classrooms who are underrepresented and gifted, or how to meet, you know, the RTI process for students who are maybe over-identified in special education, which we know certain populations of our students are. And so it's really a variety of courses that teachers can start to take amongst each topics, and with the ultimate goal to help teachers be more culturally responsive, and also to be able to have the conversations with the students in the classrooms that we know are necessary. The courses are set up so that they're asynchronous, so that the teachers can work on them anytime, anywhere. But we don't want the teachers to just tap into the information and then not have support, or have anybody to help them not only learn the content, but be able to implement the content in their classrooms. So we have specialists in the Department of Professional Learning who are assisting. We have coaches out in the schools. We have staff from, that serves on Monica Mann's team, who are really digging in and working with the teachers, in hopes that when school reopens, no matter the model, that teachers will not only have the resources they need to be more culturally relevant, but to also be culturally relevant in a different model, per se. So, you know, if your students are sitting in front of you face-to-face, it's a little bit easier, I would say, to have those conversations with them. You know, when you're doing face-to-face virtual or you're engaging with students online, it looks a little bit different. So we wanted to make sure that teachers had whatever skills they needed to begin those conversations, and to provide that culturally relevant, or that culturally responsive instruction in their classrooms. And we wanted to make sure that they had not only curriculum, but the professional learning they needed to start engaging with that throughout the summer. In addition, Monica Manns has developed an entire professional learning for central staff. So she's been working with teams, all of our teams. So she started book studies where she's working with curriculum specialists, with, well, really with all of our teams, to really start to look at what it means to be a more respectful school division with culture, and really be able to have those conversations. As you said, now more than ever, it's imperative that we look at the events over the last six months and realize that when students come back to school, many of them are going to be in trauma because of the events that have happened, and many of them are going to want support and need support. And it's imperative that our staff be able to understand and be able to listen and have empathy for our students, and to be able to guide them through some of those very difficult times, and to be proactive. So we're very excited about the series. Again, I'm happy to sit down with any of you and walk you through it and show you. I believe I did include it in a weekly update, but I know you get so much right now. But I'd love to sit you down, and I'm sure Monica would too, and walk you through it, so you can see exactly what the educators are getting. And then as far as metrics, right now, our only metric that we've been using in this last short month, since it has been out, is to look to see how many teachers are really engaged in the process, how many of them have started the course. And then beyond that, we will start to look for things like implementation in the classroom. Are teachers using processes for looking at over-identification of students in special education? Are we not finding enough students from certain diverse groups for gifted? So, you know, we'll begin to look further down the road. This is something that has just been started, and I think it's a key time to begin our conversations as we go into the school year. So we're very proud of it.
Thank you for that. I know there is a lot of behind-the-scenes work when we're thinking about, talking about things like Black Lives Matter, when we're talking about things like starving. And so I'm deeply concerned. I'd love to see a presentation of what the overall vision is. It didn't start yesterday. It won't be solved today, and it's going to take time for improvement. But the only way to get there is to really understand the whole vision of how we get there.
Yes.
And so I'd love to see the overall plan of what that looks like. I want to couple that with family engagement, because I don't think that you can offer equity and cultural classes without understanding the family engagement piece, the dynamics around single-parent and homes with a mom and a dad. And I think we have to look at those things coupled together. So I'd also love to have Adrienne to kind of share, because face, or family and community engagement, make sure I got that right. I think that Henrico County is on a journey towards excellence, but we can miss that boat if we don't get this one right.
Yes.
And we have a fantastic opportunity to get it right. But collectively, these two areas are going to have to work together with one vision, not two.
Yes.
The work is separate, but the vision is the same. And so I just share that with you, that I am deeply concerned about that. I have taken some of the courses, and I can give you feedback on my thoughts on those. I think in my old world, you know, as a health information consultant, we were required to take cultural training. I can share with you, after the training, I received questions just because I'm black, and that training provoked them to have a courageous conversation about race with me. And so I think that if we take the opportunity to be just a tad bit more innovative and work more collectively, I really think we have an opportunity to make some great change.
Yes.
So I just wanted to give you that feedback.
Yes, no, thank you for that feedback. I was looking at Andy, too. And I know, I was going to say Ingrid and Andy. I know Ingrid has done work with your building principals as well.
I just recently worked with Henrico Educational Foundation through a community grant that we will receive $60,000. A part of that is around courageous conversation for our principals, specifically for our principals, and how to do, deal with racism within our schools, along with just how to evaluate our teachers when it comes to what would a virtual walkthrough look like. So we do have plans in place. We just, I think I heard about it last night, about six, seven o'clock, that we received the grant. So we will be doing some training and laying out an extensive plan, working collaboratively with Dr. Hughes and Dr. Manns, to ensure that our principals get trained so that they could better support our teachers and our families within their communities.
I think that's phenomenal. And I just received my book through Amazon on Courageous Conversations, and I couldn't put it down before I came today. And I just, I know we have a wonderful opportunity to make a difference, and I don't want us to miss it. So thank you for that. I have another question I had around professional learning and technology. I'm excited about HCPSU. I wanted to see if there are any considerations for HCPSU for families. And so I think it's phenomenal to have that for staff, but it'd be even better with our take on a university for families around technology as well. And so just a thought I'm giving to you to consider. I know we have all kinds of videos and trainings and pieces. It'd be nice to put that together. It'd be nice to put that together. And I know I have one more here. This one really, I don't think falls under professional learning or refining pre-K through 12 approaches, but I think I missed the boat on it, so I'm going to use this opportunity.
Okay.
And it's really around special education. And so, you know, some of the work that they do really are hands-on. And so we're talking about things like feeding our children, toileting our children. And so I am aware of, you know, those collaborative classes or special ed teachers that buy their own supplies, because the truth is, we don't have some. And so I'd like to hear a little bit about some of these families will choose to be in schools. Is there something that we can do to ensure that our special education and exceptional education teachers, those that might have collab classes, those that are disabled, can we provide additional supplies that they use in the classroom?
Yes, so that's a great question. Thank you for asking. So we have, since March, really been thinking about what is the best way to serve our special needs population, particularly those who are served in our Integrated Services class, as you mentioned earlier. Many of those students have great need, and they come beyond the academics. So feeding tubes and diapering and, you know, while we realize that that population of students is more difficult to reach virtually, we also realize that bringing the students back into the school certainly would look very different. And so we've been working closely with the exceptional education team, the directors and assistant director and coordinators and specialists, as well as our special education teachers. I see many of them out here today who have really been working closely with us to say, if we were to bring students back to the classroom, what would you need? What would you need? You know, we know that they're going to need PPE that looks a little bit different than some of our regular classroom teachers. We know they're going to need more staff members in the classroom, especially for classes who have students that have feeding tubes or diapering. We know that it is more difficult, as you said, to have students who cognitively may not understand social distancing. So we have looked at everything. We have, Chris Will confirmed that we have put a lot of ask into the budget. And when he showed you some of that opening cost, that included additional PPE. It included our parent portal that we bought to, you know, assist parents with IEPs, which I know doesn't really affect students, but was a great bonus for us. We've put in digital resources. We've put in more instructional supplies for the teachers, again, because we know that it is going to be more challenging to meet their needs, whether it be virtually or whether we start to bring the students back into the school. We know that the teachers are going to need, they're going to need help, and they're going to need resources. And we certainly don't want them spending their own money to purchase that. So we have included them in our budget. And so shortly after this, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, yes. So, and Beth pointed out, too, when we had our focus meeting with the special educators last week, Dr. Vula was actually able to join us and answer some of their questions, which I hope was very beneficial for them. He at least was able to walk them through what some of the classroom resources may look like and how their PPE might need to be different. We had accounted for much of that in our budget already, but I think it was helpful for them to hear what the classroom setting will look like and what they would need to be able to adequately meet the needs of the students' IEPs once they're brought back to school.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for answering my questions. I want you to know, when it comes to exceptional education and the staff, with the tremendous hearts of diapering, the feeding tube, and it's terrifying, you know, because you're walking into a classroom that you're going to have to have hands-on.
Yes.
And so I feel reassured that they're going to have the supplies they need without coming out of their own pockets for it. And I'm so excited that you are looking into a different type of PPE. It is not the same PPE that we would use in general education in some spaces.
That's correct.
And so looking at sort of that equitable space, that classroom, if they're in person, I'm delighted that you're exploring the different PPEs that are available. So thank you so much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you. All right, approaches to learning. Let's do this. That's where we are, right? All right, here we go. All right, so I-
We're doing both. We do two. Yeah, we do two, both, professional learning. No, we've been going two at a time. We started with school guidance survey data. Yep, so we're taking the next two at a time.
Got it. All right. So, you know, I'm a very practical person. And so, you know, a lot of my stakeholders, they want to, you know, what they really care about in the end of the day is what is this going to look like for my child? So can you paint me a very brief picture of what a typical day would look like, let's say, for a second grader in the classroom with mitigation strategies? So hypothetically, the parent takes the temperature and does the health screening before they go. They go to the bus stop. What happens next?
So I'm happy to help, too. I was looking at Ingrid only because I-
And I can take that while they're coming up in the essence of time. So certainly, you know-
Excuse me, Ms. Shee. Ms. Atkins, just want to make sure you know we're doing two at a time. So if you had any questions that you'd like to address with professional learning plus refining pre-K 12 approach learning, this would be your opportunity.
Thank you, I did.
Okay.
But I'm looking in the interest of time, and I'm fine with yielding my thoughts on that. And I'll yield that over to you. It's fine.
Thanks, Ms. Atkins. I was answering Mrs. Shee's question about what the school day might look like. For example, a second grader, you pointed out. They, the parents done the health screening at home, and so they've entered the bus. So I'll pick up sort of where Mr. Ellis, our transportation director, mentioned. We would be using three-feet distancing on the bus. Students would be seated likely staggered aisle window, hopefully getting to a routine of assigned seating. And then when students would exit the bus and come into their classrooms, we wouldn't be visiting common spaces like library checkouts in the morning or breakfast in the cafeteria. They'd report to their classroom. Again, the idea would be that students would be, you know, wearing their face coverings at all times. And then in the classrooms, you know, we would, just as we would do virtually, want to mimic as much of the school day as possible, recognizing things like collaboration when students are doing collaboration with their peers and others that might actually happen virtually in the classroom if they're face-to-face or in-person in our classrooms via something like Google. So, you know, no sharing of supplies. The cafeteria wouldn't be the place we'd be going to eat. Art, music, PE would come to the classroom. We'd try to utilize outdoor spaces, absolutely, for things like recess and physical education.
Thank you. So they're essentially, just to clarify before, they're essentially going to be, at this time, at the same desk for the majority of the class, the school day, except for maybe a limited recess, whether permitting.
Yeah, we certainly would want to maximize our outdoor spaces as we're able, because we've seen in the guidelines the benefits of being able to utilize those spaces. But the idea would be our teachers would be working to maintain that distancing. And again, in the five-day return, we see a three-feet protocol in the hybrid, because as the groups shrink, you know, there's more space. That's a six-feet protocol. But the idea would be that be maintained all day, throughout the day, whether in art, music, or physical education.
Thank you. And this is not meant as a criticism, but more as a reflection of the reality of the situation. As an educator and a parent, that's a very sterile and almost bleak environment, particularly for elementary education. In contrast of that, can you please walk me through what a second grader's day may look like on virtual education? And I picked, I just picked second grade because it's, you know, kind of upper, lower elementary. And I think, I know we put out that sample schedule, and it included a large block with whole group, small group, et cetera. For a non-elementary educator like myself, can you break down in layman's terms what that means and what it might look like virtually, please?
Sure. So I know many of you have seen the sample schedule, and we had one in the PowerPoint, too. And I think that has caused some concern for parents because they are, and think that students would be sitting on the computer for five or six hours a day. And we know that especially our elementary students are not able to do that. We're very cognizant of that. What that schedule was meant to do, and I think someone mentioned this earlier, was to show that we are responsible for teaching all of the subjects to students. And so we know that we need to teach, you know, math, language arts, and we need to teach our content. So I think when a student were to sign on virtually, the first thing that students would do in the morning, and they would probably, they would do this all together, would be that morning meeting. And that would be a way for a teacher to establish some rapport with her class, to look at some of those social, emotional needs, to talk about the calendar, to talk about, you know, how's our day going, talk about the weather, whatever. You know, obviously, I'm using an elementary example, but you asked for second grade. I think from then, the teacher would move into some language arts instruction. And again, there might be a small portion that's whole group. I think that that may be for, you know, 20, 30 minutes, where the teacher's directing the students. And then I think the teacher would actually sign off with the whole group, and the teacher may be pushing in to meet with either certain groups of students in small group settings, or maybe working with one student or could be working with two students, while the students were at home doing some independent work. So they could be doing something that the teacher had assigned paper, pencil, or the teacher could, you know, the students could be working on some of our digital resources, or they could be doing a project that spans over, you know, a week's time or something. Then I think the students would come back on and repeat the process. And again, the teachers are going to be on brain breaks throughout the day and are going to be cognizant, again, of the developmental needs of the students. So this isn't going to be just, you know, one hour after the other, but students would have some brain breaks. They would come back on and perhaps do a math lesson, again, where there may be a whole group lesson for the students that may be 15, 20 minutes, where there's some direct instruction with the teacher. And then I think the teacher, again, would sign back off and work with small groups of students that either needed opportunities for growth or maybe need some enrichment, while the students, again, are engaging in some independent task. I think there would be a time, again, for the students to take a break, to engage in some recess or some brain breaks at home. There would be a time in their day for lunch. And again, that would be flexible. We know that if the students aren't sitting, you know, right in front of us and they're at home virtually, we may ask them to try and have a lunch break between a certain time so that our instruction can continue. But again, that would be flexible, once the teacher created that with her class. I think the students would sign back on and engage in either social studies or science. Again, whatever content is, you know, key to their grade level. So in this case, second-grade content. They may do science one week and social studies the next week, or they may try and do both in some fashion. And again, I think it would be some whole-group instruction. But then it would be time for students to be able to have some independent practice and to be able to apply some of that knowledge. And some of that independent practice may happen in the day, and some of it could happen, you know, outside of the traditional school hours. But we're very focused on the fact that while we know that we need for the students to have forward learning in all subjects, we also know that we need to make sure that we're cognizant of the developmental needs of our students and how long they can attend to screen time and how long they would need to engage in some independent time.
So let me, let me just be real explicit for all the stakeholders listening, and a real direct answer. Virtual learning does not mean six hours of screen time for our K2.
No.
And I think that's a huge misconception, and that's why I wanted to be just really direct with that. We'll be using pen and paper, and perhaps we could have, would it be possible for our schools to, you know, maybe run some packets for our families that don't have, you know, printing and pick it up? There's a lot of solutions here, and I think there's been a lot of misconceptions. And I really appreciate y'all walking us through those examples, because I think that shows that what's happening in the building isn't school. Nothing that's happening this year, at least at the start of the year, is going to be school as we know it, and we love it.
No.
And that's such an essential part of this, and looking at what's truly the most developmentally appropriate. And while, you know, at first blush, it's like, well, getting our kids back together. But when I hear what that's going to look like, and when I hear about expecting my six-year-old, who's like bright and vibrant, to sit at the same desk all day, I see her love of learning and her personality dimming. And while I'm a household that doesn't do screen time, I see what we can offer virtually at this time to be much more developmentally appropriate than what we can offer in the classroom for many of our, for many of our students. So I really appreciate you illuminating that. A couple of quick questions about the schedule. I've heard a lot of feedback about possibly condensing our kindergarten learning into the morning, which would allow for that afternoon. Could we do that with seat time allocations?
Yeah, absolutely. We're going to guide our teachers at the elementary level to make sure that as they're developing their classroom schedules, just that they would, for in-person instruction, that they're mindful of all of those things. One thing I will mention, since specifically you asked a second-grade example earlier about what would the virtual day look like, and now you've brought the notion, again, of our younger learners. Part of this full virtual return that I'm recommending comes with the idea that we would be working towards in the first nine weeks, a limited in-person return for our youngest students, pre-K through three, some of our special education students. And that might happen by appointment, one-on-one, as we make sure we have PPE in our hands. So it may be that some of that afternoon time a kindergarten teacher may be using for individual appointments with students or a second-grade teacher or so on. So I just wanted to add that to kind of get an idea of the virtual learning day and that limited in-person return and working our way up to more and more students in the classroom as we have built some confidence around our health and safety mitigation strategies and have the supplies needed in hand.
Thank you. I also want to reiterate, I truly appreciate the flexibility we're trying to build in for our working families whose schedules may need a little bit more flexibility. I want to jump over to the question about staffing and staffing our various options. In the survey we gave a few weeks ago, there was a 12% gap between the families wanting to return and the staff that indicated they were comfortable returning. And I recognize that that's a snapshot of a moment in time and that many things have happened since there, including your focus groups. And so from your, from your focus groups and the data you've kind of collected there, do you see that 12% gap in the last three weeks increasing, decreasing, or maintaining?
We have more staff now that aren't comfortable coming into school than originally responded that maybe they were. And I think their hearts are there, and that's where they want to be. But I think they're very, I know they're very concerned about the health of their students and the health of their families, themselves and their families.
Absolutely. So I'm hearing that gap's increasing.
Yes.
And so, you know, my question to you is, if we were to return, to not do a virtual return and return in-person to school, how do we make up that gap?
That's a good question, because, you know, we have to have teachers in the classrooms to be able to meet the needs of the students that are there. We also know that oftentimes, a good portion of our subpool comes from our prep participants, and they tend to be older and in some of the higher-risk areas. So, you know, when we've heard from some of them that they're not comfortable right now coming back into a classroom, and so what other things could they be doing? So I think, you know, that's a challenge that, you know, we'll have to, we would have to find a way to address if they were, if students were coming back. But I can't say with 100% that we would have the teachers that we need.
I spoke to each of my principals this week, and at least that one of my, all of my principals indicated that as a concern. One of them estimated that approximately 80% of their staff was not comfortable returning to a building. That's a huge gap to make up. And it's a huge gap, because we want the best people in front of our students. And, you know, even if we had the funds to hire, you know, extra teachers for the building while our other teachers are teaching virtually, we don't have the applicant pool for it. And that's a big concern, a concern of mine. Just quickly, we talked about some IEP services, 504 additional services, as well as will gifted services be provided? You know, will all of those types of services be provided virtually?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, Dr. Cashwell and staff, can you? Virtual is none of our goal. We don't want to stay there. We all want, as parents, as educators, We all want, as parents, as educators, we want our students back in the building, but, but we want it done safely. So what does the road back to the building look like?
Yeah, and, and that's a great question. And, and so, you know, at the beginning of the presentation, we showed you that, that what looked sort of like a wavy pathway forward with different approaches to returning. And in each of those scenarios, safe and healthy, health and safety mitigation strategies are present, but that number of group, the group of students back in our buildings grows incrementally. We want our approach to learning to be the best it can be and the safest it can be. And right now, when we start, start looking at larger groups, so even a hybrid model brings hundreds of students back into a building. And so, when we hear, and again, in absence of any metric provided by our Virginia Health Department, in sort of this vacuum space we are, to know which metric we're monitoring, we have to look at all the data points we have at hand. And right now, what we know is that the number of questions seems to outweigh answers on a number of fronts when it comes to transmission and students and their various age groups. And so this, the example that was cited were, was with class, well, childcare, and it was groups of 10 or less. And so, you know, our approach to the first nine weeks will be make sure that we're not going above groups of 10 or more, and that we're doing, we're leaning on virtual learning as the primary method of reaching our students, but taking the students who may have the most challenges with virtual learning, like our ELL Level 1 student, some of our special education students as their IEPs would be appropriate, and our youngest learners, pre-K through three, and bringing them back in a manner that's incremental and gradual, working with our teachers to understand just how those health and safety mitigation strategies are playing out in the classroom, understanding things like the availability of the PPE that's necessary for us just to meet those basic health and mitigation strategies, and then finding our way forward as, as we're looking at the current conditions. And so I think the, the first nine-week period gives us an opportunity to learn from all of those things, build confidence around health and safety, and, and look at the data we'll have available at the time to see how we can begin to increase that number. Perhaps at that time, we can move towards a hybrid model where that group of students grows, but it's still limited. And again, always offering that fully virtual option for our families and for our teachers who aren't ready to return, even in those circumstances. So the idea is to get our students back to in-person instruction 100%, but we want to do that in a manner that's gradual and put safety first.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. And Ms. Cancello would be really disappointed with me if I didn't point out, because of our historically large class sizes, that even if we have 50% of our kids in a class, it's not 10 or smaller for most of our classes.
That's correct. And so our hybrid models, our hybrid models, we're actually looking at less than half a class in half, based on the number of families who originally indicated they would want to go fully virtually, then that left already a smaller class size, and, and cutting that in half again. And so, we would absolutely have to understand the intent of our families and what those class sizes would look like, even in a hybrid model, before making that choice.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Shea. Before we go to Ms. Cancello, I'm going to start with Ms. Ogborne, then Ms. Cancello.
Okay. Just wanted to tag on a couple of things that Dr. Cashwell was just talking about. So what I can see us doing at this point is we, under your plan, your recommendation to us is that we would start virtually, but our goal would be to move into the classroom gradually. So I would like to make a suggestion, obviously it would be evaluated at, closer to the time, but I could see us starting with our youngest, start with kindergarten. And because when I get contacted with parents, from parents, the ones they're most worried about, other than kids with, you know, extreme needs or additional needs, then, then, and we need to meet those, but are the kindergarten students who have the most difficulty using virtual, and our first graders who are learning to read, who need those relationships one-on-one. So I would like to plant the seed that when we are moving that way, that we concentrate on those youngest kindergarten, first grade first. And I'm looking at what some of our neighbors are thinking, and there are a couple of counties in Maryland who are thinking this way, that they would start virtually, and then four to six weeks in, they're going to maybe bring the kindergarteners back. They bring the kindergarteners back for like a week, then they try first grade. And we phase in the use of buildings being in larger groups, but they're phasing in those kindergarteners even then in small groups. In Tennessee, for example, they're bringing back five kindergarteners at a time. And so if a teacher would have, you know, 20 students, she would meet five on Monday, five on Tuesday. It is something. And I know that's difficult, but it shows there, I mean, first of all, honestly, I think some of our families need hope. That, I mean, I met, what, I virtually with a group of parents just a couple of days ago, and one of the things they talked about is this desire to go back to normal. My gut reaction is, wouldn't we all love that? And we all would. That would be our first choice. None of what we're talking about is our first choice. But normal, like Ms. Shea said, it doesn't exist. So we've got to accept that and then make the best way forward that we can. So if we, our goal is to gradually bring children in. I think that would be a great goal, and start with our youngest ones first.
Yeah, and we intend to do that in this first nine weeks, as we're able to. And so, you know, and as I said, on a limited in-person basis.
Right, absolutely.
And that may mean starting once, one by one. And so we're going to be working with, during this first nine-week period, to make sure that we understand what it even looks like, bringing one, two, three students, a small group in, and that limited in-person instruction, focusing on our youngest students for all the reasons you've just mentioned, as well as some others that I mentioned. And, and I think in the presentation, we even heard about some of our secondary programming, like our ACE programming, things where they're using, you know, the house building, where you might be working on welding one student at a time in an outdoor setting. We're aiming towards, you know, incremental phased approach to getting students back in our classrooms. That is absolutely a shared goal for all of us, but, you know, again, we want to do that safely, and we want to make sure that we're taking a measured approach.
Well, and I can also see that with our seniors, because I feel like those kids who are getting ready to have this huge transition away from us in this year is going to be so difficult. So I can imagine bringing our seniors in, making sure that they have what they need in order to transition to whatever that next choice is for them, and make sure that they have all the, all their coursework, et cetera, especially with those kids who are taking specialized classes like you talked about. But I do have a couple of questions, Dr. Tiggen. I know that relationship building is one of the things that is so important with between a teacher and her students. So I'm curious what that would look like. I've gotten this from a number of people who are confused about, will, if we go, if we went all virtual, let's say, would a teacher be with her class, you know, the traditional class?
Yes.
Or will we have a blended approach where a teacher might be with any, just?
No, the, the intent would be for students to be assigned to a teacher in a specific class, just like they would if we were able to be normal.
Right.
And so the relationships are important.
And let's say we're talking kindergarten, and let's say, you know, hopefully we get there where we can start phasing kids back in. So when those children would enter the building again, they would enter that teacher's classroom who they're used to being with?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think a lot of parents are confused about this part, because they, they say, okay, well, how does that work? Are we going to have blended? Or, there are some parents who even think they're going to be from one school to another school to, you know. And, and I think that's a lot of confusion about how this is going to work. So I think messaging, when we get to this point, will be crucial to make parents understand how this is going to work. And, I mean, I, I think that's crucial, but I also think it's crucial that we, we set high, the highest of expectations for our students and our staff, that we have a goal here, and this is, this is not the time for students to check out. I mean, I actually have seen messages from kids back and forth, oh, the superintendent recommended we might go virtual, do y'all want to go do this? And I've had, I mean, no, we're not going to be doing these things. This is a, this is going to be the school day. So if we have high expectations for kids, my experience, they live up to them. And we need to communicate those to our students and to our families. And the, the last question I have is about materials. Dr. Cashwell mentioned this briefly. How are we going to make sure that when a teacher is, is in her classroom, let's say they're in the classroom and they're working virtually with their students, that their students have the materials that they need in order to do the work the teachers want them to do?
And this has been a part of the planning process of what has been thought through, and the costs have been shared, and that's part of the cost of reopening schools.
And I will mention, in some of the focus groups, and one of the things we intend to do, and again, one reason today is an important milestone, when we have our models set, we'll be able to plan further. And so right now, we've been planning sort of at a high level what various models can look like. And so, for teachers to understand, you know, the pathway for the first nine weeks being virtual, we've already had teacher groups, and we'll continue to lean on them to help us come up with best practices for what that can look like. But, you know, it may be that, you know, we've seen, we saw all of this in the spring in just collecting student supplies and returning library books in a drive-through fashion, and the lunches, same thing. Teachers may be creating kits of hands-on manipulatives for younger students, and families would come through and drive through to get them or make appointments to pick them up. There may be appointments, as I said, for small group instruction or individual instruction. We, we will be working to examine every angle to do it well. Certainly don't have all of that figured out today, because as I say, the important thing right now for us will be to know what is that model, so that we can do our very best to maximize student engagement.
Okay. So this week, I also spoke to a number, matter of fact, all the principals in the Brooklyn District. And the one thing that I'm continuing to hear, I mean, I've, I've just been so impressed, and I guess just, the, the, the longer we're in COVID, the more we all carry. I mean, parents, families, our schools, communities, Hemaraco County Public Schools, Central Office, Division Leadership Team, we are, we are all carrying things. Everyone is in the community. But in listening to my principals this week, I wanted to ask specifically, I see some of the social emotional supports that we're, that we're offering, I feel as though there are links online, and I know that our principals attend principals' meetings where they're talking principal stuff, but are there any opportunities where the principals could maybe, I don't know, just decompress with what? Have meetings, not to talk about school business, but just to talk about their, what they carry, because they're carrying the weight of not only the entire staff of their school, but their entire school community. So I just wanted to put that forward.
Thank you.
And ask what's available.
You're right. I mean, just the load that our staff, on so many levels, but particular administrators are carrying, and so we want to do all we can to support them, and I think that's great feedback, and I appreciate you sharing that, and anything we can do to work to support them in a social emotional manner as well. I know Dr. Grant has been working on that, so suggestion noted, and thank you for bringing that.
And she often, she provides time at the beginning of every principal meeting for them just to talk.
I think it was, is it separate, though, for the elementaries?
Yes, yeah, elementary.
But I think this was maybe just the opportunity.
To all be together?
To maybe all be together?
Okay.
And, and just see what everyone's feeling? I don't know.
And I just think it's a great suggestion, and likely applies to a number of our employee groups, so I appreciate you bringing that forward, and I think that's something we can work through, I'm thinking, on how we can create those opportunities.
Okay. And we're currently working on a plan with the Professional Learning Department to do something in early August to just motivate us, the administrators in coming back to school.
Right, okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to put it forward. And then I have, you mentioned the ACE program being one of the building specialty programs that we, we would bring in first. Is that a change to what was posted online?
We specifically called out our, our, the idea of bringing limited in-person instruction to the same groups that were noted in the VDOE Phase 2 guidance, which was our English Language Learners Level 1, Special Education as Appropriate through IEPs, and then that pre-K through three group. And, you know, we added the languages and other specialty programs as we're able. I think we're going to want to hear from our teachers as we begin virtual instruction, and, and want them to be able to think creatively about what it might look like to offer limited in-person instruction and go from there. We knew right away from hearing initial feedback, even some of it unsolicited, from our teachers who work with those programs that say, hey, we're outside, you know, we're doing home building, we're doing bricklaying, could I bring a student in individually? And we want to be able to facilitate that happening, but also make sure that our health and safety mitigation plan is solid, in place, and followed as we begin to, again, work through the smaller interactions up to the bigger interactions with more students.
Then, which option offers, and I mean, I know the answer, but, but I'm trying to make a point for those who may be watching, which offer, which option offers the great amount of live synchronous learning with their teachers from their zone school, and which option offers the least of synchronous learning with a teacher from their school?
Yeah, if you're comparing the hybrid, and I think this is what Mrs. Ogborne spoke to before, there's some miscommunication about to which teacher would you be assigned? If we move to the fully virtual model that I've recommended, students would be assigned to their teacher at their homeschool, their classrooms, as they would have been assigned in person, and then we're going to keep monitoring conditions and work towards that in-person return. If we were to move towards a hybrid model, and we had some teachers opting to teach face-to-face, and some teachers who may teach virtually, we recognize that based on how those numbers play out, and, and we've already talked about what those challenges look like to have enough in-person instructors based on any number of factors, you know, it may be that you're not assigned virtually. If you're a parent or family who chooses the virtual pathway, at that time, you may not be assigned to a teacher who is in your homeschool. And so, we would have to look at staffing and creatively work to create those assignments. So, to your answer, which option creates the most synchronous with your classroom teacher? That would be the fully virtual option that's being proposed.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, to, for that to be explained and highlighted, that the 100% virtual will actually give families a more synchronous time face-to-face with their teacher. What are the metrics? I, I know we've been talking, we don't have metrics yet, we're going to have the team for the first students to return to the building, but I have to say, I've really heard from the community, just, just how carefully these metrics, you know, what, what is, you know, what will they be built around, and just caution with them, and especially to our special education population, who are some of the most vulnerable children we have, that are we going to have special metrics for, for them? And I don't, I don't mean to say to treat them differently, but yet to be more sensitive to their underlying condition, that it, it, right, our level of safety, right, as we develop that metric.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point, and, you know, we recognize when we think about the 50,000 students we serve and over 7,000 employees, everyone has their own unique situation. And so we want to make sure that, you know, while one data point may be a metric agreed upon around health and safety of the community when it comes to COVID transmission, we know that there, there will be the need to continue to offer that fully virtual throughout this situation, because, you know, even though we may see improvements in the community or that metric may be reached, individuals need to be able to make that choice that best meets their health needs at the time.
And if I heard you earlier, you had already said that the, our special education teachers had been, been involved in quite a few focus groups, I believe.
Absolutely.
I mean, I just want to make sure that voice is not lost.
Absolutely.
In the equity piece of, of how we come back.
I think our teachers of, whether they be special education or English Language Learners or any number of groups of students we serve, know best what the considerations are that will need to be in place, both virtually or face-to-face, so the more we can do to listen and learn from them regarding how we can transfer those best practices to teachers all across the division, the better.
Okay. And then it was said earlier in the meeting that teachers would have a choice, depending, depending on the option, but if it was 100% virtual, for example, it was said, teachers would have a choice to work in the building, and it wouldn't be required. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. We want to offer that, part of the flexibility and safety consideration would mean, if a teacher's comfortable coming to work, knowing that we're going to follow all those health mitigation and cleaning strategies, and screening the public, and all of that, we'd like for them to be able to have the option to work from their classroom and have the supplies they need. And if that's not an option that works for them, allowing them to, of course, fulfill the virtual teaching obligation from home, or whatever that space might be.
But it's not subject to, it's not flexibility subject to medical reasons?
If it criteria, no, it's a choice.
It's flexibility.
It's a teacher choice.
Okay. And then will the, what are the differences, are the differences in employment, perhaps with the five-day or the hybrid? You know how normally when we do the staffing component, which, which approach is the best right now for employment in your building, guaranteed position when we go back in, you know, in the building? Full-time and without furloughs? Which option is the best and meets all those criteria?
Well, you know, I think you, you've asked multi-layers in that question, and I'll ask Mrs. Bolden, our HR, Chief of HR, to come forth if she has anything to add to my answer, but I would say, first of all, our intent with the full virtual return model is that we're, we're not furloughing any employees, that we're, we're keeping our employees working, and if, if they are not in a mode of delivering virtual instruction. And if they are not in a mode of delivering virtual instruction, as we use the example of our drivers may deliver food out into the community, and by the way, many have done that throughout the closure, but looking at how to utilize all of our staff to the best manner possible. Our counselors would still be offering that virtual school counseling and so on. We would want to keep our folks at work. And of course, when you're assigning students to their homeschool, staff, case managers, whatever it might be, that does eliminate many of the complications that come from using blended models and having both sort of a fully virtual teaching staff and in-person, in-classroom teaching staff. That does complicate things from a human resources perspective. It's not impossible, and it's a challenge we're willing to work through. But many of those challenges are mitigated when you look at moving fully one direction, such as with this virtual model.
Okay. And then I had, I had some suggestions, actually, I wanted to put forward from students, from Student Voice Group pilot this week. Students said, actually, and it's great to see that we have the HCPSU for teachers and staff, because they actually wanted it for themselves and their parents. So it's great that you're developing something similar, I think, we said earlier in the meeting.
Yes, thank you for bringing forward Student Voice. And it's something we mentioned in the presentation. And while obviously our professional learning for teachers is more robust and developed, and we've even got a nice family component. I think your suggestion about students is fantastic. And that's something we want to do is keep them engaged in this process and help us know how we can fine-tune our virtual learning to best meet their needs and also provide them the strategies they need to be successful. So thank you for elevating Student Voice here.
Well, and then they also requested, and these were secondary kids, but there's more on that at the end. I just want to put forth their ideas during the return to school approaches. They said outdoor learning, hybrid, hybrid or virtual, that please, and social, whether it was just social and emotional, coming and standing in the bus loop, at the, you know, what did it look like at the elementary, middle school, high school? I don't know what it looks like socially distanced, but they just said, please, we've got outdoor space. We've got parks in Henrico County. We've got, you know, grounds on our school. I don't know how it would work, but they requested that. And then they were talking about the importance of the transition, that so many of our kids, they were specifically speaking to ninth graders, kids going from eighth grade to ninth grade, moving up. And then we started, we expanded the conversation. And then the kids started talking, we started talking about, oh, well, the pre-K kindergarten kids, that's a transition. And then we started talking to the fifth to sixth graders, that's a transition. So what can we do there where it's like a, I don't, I don't know if they have a buddy system in the school. I don't, I don't know how this would work amidst hybrid or, or virtual. But the kids requested that, and I thought it was important. And then they also said, they also asked, what does the SOTA program look like? And that may be something that we reimagined during this time. I'm not sure. But that was all Student Voice from high school students.
Yeah, well, we have certainly noted that. And I think Dr. Hughes addressed a bit about the transitions have been on our mind, too. How do we help our first-time kindergarteners, first-time in Henrico School, first-time going to a middle school, and finding ways to buddy up, whether it's virtually, do some limited in-person socially-distanced events at our schools that would meet that need. And specifically, you know, we'll take back that feedback about reimagining the SOTA program as well. Thank you.
I do have a thought in thinking about the closure in March and the phenomenal efforts that I saw from staff trying to reach those families and students that were not participating. And for a variety of reasons why some students weren't participating, a variety of reasons why families may not have been getting back in contact with those teachers. I'm aware that teachers did spend a good amount of time trying to track them down. What do we have in place to help? I think we're going to need the support staff so that we can take that element away from our teachers of trying to follow up on students that aren't participating virtually or trying to get in contact with families and they're not able to get in contact with them. I know traditionally, when we're in a classroom for teachers, they usually do that. But virtually, I just feel like that's way too much of an ask for our teachers and staff. So do we have any supports in place? Or what are your thoughts around that?
I would ask you to stay tuned. Dr. Hughes and Dr. Grant and I were talking the other day about how we could utilize maybe some of our other resources during this time that would help with some of the lifts needed at our schools.
Fantastic. I'm really eager to hear what that looks like. I think when we're thinking about a school system, you know, when you go back to when schools began to exist, even if you go back to slavery, the intent is to teach. And, you know, we have evolved as a school system throughout the country to do so much more than just teach. And one aspect of this that I am concerned about is our abused students, is our homeless students. And our teachers have big hearts. And they know when specific students aren't showing up in the classroom immediately to follow up with someone. Virtually, I think it'll be a bit more difficult. But I do see in this particular case of COVID, that has the potential to expand. And I think that we really need to explore how we hop on that immediately and not when schools open and definitely take that off the plate of our teachers. So I'm glad you're exploring that.
Well, and I know Dr. Hughes would tell you that school counselors, social workers, these are things that are already on their radar and that they're working on even in August with kids that weren't engaged either at the end of the school year, throughout the summer. And so that's something that is not waiting to the school year for us to start working on.
That's phenomenal, because I have two students that were homeless, and they didn't understand how to get in contact with someone. And so while they knew Henrico County Public Schools provided some sort of service, they just were unaware of how. And these were high school students. And I think that the virtual component lends itself to an environment that's conducive to exasperate a situation. And so I'm eager to hear more about whatever plans you come up with. And I also understand that this decision for your staff, leadership teams, and teachers, there's so much you can do until you get a decision. And so I want to be very clear that I do understand that. And I'm eager to find out what that plan looks like to help so that it's not on our teachers' plate and that we give our homeless population, and particularly of students, access and accessibility to services. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Is that it, Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Thank you so much, madam. Dr. Tagen, please put the agenda back up. We've got two more, we have two more stars to cover. The next two that we'll speak to briefly are health and safety and budget. And Ms. Consella, since I've started on my left the last two times, madam, I'll start to my right. If you have any concerns or questions concerning health and safety and budget.
Yes, I do. Let me see. Transportation. I heard, I heard that we're short probably about 60 bus drivers maybe for the fall, subject to confirmation. And how does that impact the options that we're looking at, especially as to safety, transport, health? I mean, I know we talked about it earlier, but I just want to know if, if that shortage during this time impacts a strategy such that it looks different, whether we're hybrid or virtual, or, you know, five-day?
Yes, it still affects the driver shortage because we're still having difficulty with now, by hiring drivers, it's still going to be a month or two process. We're having issues with the DMV just now opening up. So it's going to be an even longer process to bring in drivers with that shortage. And we have everybody that has a license driving a bus right now, and we're still behind. So that would certainly mitigate the problems.
And then, this probably is just more of a comment as to facilities that Mr. Pritchard talked about earlier with our HVAC issues. With 50% of our buildings, over 50 years old, I mean, are they really safe? And I know you've addressed this, but I mean, I'm just circling back to it because the agenda's been kind of interesting today as to where things fit under health and safety, health and safety. But I'm just going to circle back to health and safety. When 50% of our buildings are over 50 years old, do we really have the funding? And I know that's common in the budget, that's more of a budget question. But do we really have the funding, like funded, to fix it?
I mean, we have a budget that is set aside. If it goes beyond that budget, then no, it's not, it's not a budgeted item. It's something that we're going to have to get money for. But we have an HVAC budget, yes.
Yeah, I would say that with aging facilities, our capital improvement funding has been a challenge. While we have an allocation, you know, each year for HVAC repair and maintenance, you know, with the number of aging facilities, we would like to see that number growing as we've been funded. And so I think that remains a question as to whether the demand that we could see would be adequately met with the budget we currently have.
That was, that was the answer to the question is, could we adequately meet it given where we were in our capital plan when everything was paused? So we don't know.
We do not.
Okay. If you haven't, this is a staff support question. If you haven't already invoked FMLA, would this, this option would be available to those needing childcare, correct?
There is a Families First Coronavirus Act that was passed, and I might ask our HR and legal folks to make sure I capture this correctly. But I believe that it allows for FMLA to be taken for purposes of childcare during this COVID crisis, in which case either the childcare provider has closed or has reached capacity and you're unable to access that. And I think it provides for a limited amount of paid leave. Yes.
And then last question as to the new OSHA guidelines and others. If I'm not mistaken, I believe there are some guidelines that were newly released that we haven't even seen yet. Have those come, are those actually incorporated into the plans? Dr. Tagen?
No, we have yet to, we know that there are new employment expectations around COVID coming into place, specifically about informing employees about someone testing positive in the work environment. But we have received no details yet from, from the state on that.
And to your point, you know, it's in this world of ever-changing information and ever-changing guidelines, these new OSHA guidelines, which we're required to follow. I mentioned that not only do we serve 50,000 students, we employ over 7,000 employees. And we are mandated to make sure that we're providing that health and safety, safe work environment, and that we're following these guidelines. And we've yet to see what the newly issued guidelines entail.
And I probably wouldn't expect anything till mid-August, when the General Assembly comes back in.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all for me.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Ms. Ogborne?
Sure. I would just, let's go to our budget, if we could, since we're doing the last two, the budget page, which having this board's budget necessarily, and I'm not, I shouldn't say I'm not complaining, but it's, it was necessary cutbacks that we faced in March before we approved our budget. Now we're faced with the other side, and that is consequences of COVID on the negative side of having to adjust our budget. Now we're on the COVID side of having to increase our budget. So when I look at this, I know we've received a breakout of what all this would, would cost. And those costs are virtual, they're hybrid, they're whatever we face, because even if we started virtually, as the superintendent recommends, we would ease into a hybrid approach that will have additional cleaning costs, that will have additional family supports, we would need more staffing, and we're under a hiring freeze. So if you could, Mr. Sorensen, just summarize basically your recent communications with our county counterparts?
Sure, I can do that. I would like to just add one thing to your comment, if I could, please. So when you typically hear the word virtual, you might think that the buildings are empty. And obviously, by the conversation today, so the costs are going to accrue, there'll be more later on as we open up, but they're certainly going to accrue during the first quarter as well, because the buildings will be very, very busy. So the conversation with the county, we have, we have shared our estimate with the county. Just like any budget process we go through, now that they have that information, we'll get together and meet to determine a funding plan and how we, how we fund this $29.7 million. In conjunction with that, now that, as the superintendent said, now that we have, when you guys vote today, we'll have a plan and we can focus more on the numbers and refund them some. And if we need to change the $29.7 million, we can, once we have a plan to focus in on. But wherever we land, we'll continue the conversations with the county to get the funding and make the decisions we need to make to move forward.
Right. So in that vein, I would like to make a suggestion. I looked at the schedule for the Board of Supervisors, and they have a meeting next Tuesday. So I would suggest that this board meet with that board and have that conversation if, if my colleagues are willing. I think we have to have it. We cannot wait till their meeting in August because if we have a funding need, and I know they are, they have said they are very supportive and will, you know, make the resources that we need available to our students and our families. But it comes with a cost, and we need to prioritize those for the county side. And I don't think that we should have our staff be saddled with these, I mean, we need decisions so that our staff can move forward. And so I would suggest that we reach out to our Board of Supervisors and suggest that prior to their meeting and work session next week, we meet with them if they're amenable and available. So I'll throw that out there. Mr. Chair?
Before the, the madam superintendent makes that request, Ms. Consella, you want to say something?
Yes, because this is 29.7 million. I just want to clarify, 29.7 million for everyone watching, additional funds in addition to the 9.4 million we already received and have spent already on COVID from CARES Act. We've already spent that 9.4 million. So this is another potentially 29.7 million.
For which there is not a funding source.
Correct.
And that is, and so while absolutely, as Mrs. Ogborne said, our counterparts in county government always want to be able to work with us to make sure our schools have what they need, we both, you know, we both endured budget cuts that were very drastic. They were catastrophic in many ways to the school budget at the beginning of COVID, as well as to the county government budget. We heard the cuts that were made. So we'll have to be very strategic and working together to think about how we will fund this potentially $29.7 million need that we have based on just meeting the health and safety reopening guidelines and so much more. And working together will be important. So I'm certainly, we'll make sure that I make that request to the manager. And I know the chairman of both boards will help facilitate that.
Ms. Atkins, will you be okay with that request from myself and the superintendent?
I am.
Ms. Shea?
Yeah.
Ms. Consella?
Absolutely.
Well, I don't need to ask you.
That's right.
Ms. Ogborne, anything else you want to add?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Ms. Shea?
Yeah, I only have one question for, for this section. So, I love some good humor. All right.
I love teachers.
The main function of our schools is not childcare. However, we know that we fill that gap for a lot of our families. So one of the biggest hurdles for me in truly getting comfortable with either a parallel or a hybrid model was thinking about our double-working families and our single-parent families, or, and our families for which school is their safety net. And for me, a huge part of this has been, you know, many conversations with Dr. Cashwell about leveraging these community partnerships like HEF and PALS to provide, to help fill that community childcare gap. And if you could just briefly and concisely paint us a picture of what that would actually look like for our students?
Absolutely. So a number of our partners in childcare that you just mentioned, who often operate right out of our own school buildings, were helping fill a childcare gap that was necessary all along. Because, you know, our school day often doesn't mirror a traditional workday for many of our families. And so we had a lot of after-school enrichment programs and those sorts of things going on. So imagine very much that these partners are willing to rethink their programs to operate during what would have been the span of the entire school day. Most of them operate on sliding scales and those sorts of things, making sure they're very accessible, affordable to our families. Oftentimes, there are grant funds associated with some of this programming to offer even at no cost for families. And so the idea would be that we And so the idea would be that we would have wide access to a wide range of partner childcare providers all across the county that would be available during the school day hours so that students could be there, participating in those programs, but also participating in their virtual school day. And again, because we have had strong partnerships with these kinds of groups, even during normal circumstances, we collaborate with them so that maybe their after-school enrichment activities line up with the things we're learning in the classroom. This would be the same. We'd partner with them to help them understand what our virtual learning looks like so that they would be better able to help support that during the day. And I know in conversations with our staff and at least those, the YMCA, our PALS, and our Learning and Discovery with HEF, they are ready to redesign and stand-up programs where they're already licensed to be childcare providers in many of our buildings and county facilities to get those going in a unique manner.
Yeah, I think it's going to take a community approach to solve really any of the challenges we face with COVID. And so, you know, what I'm hearing and in the conversations we've had, Dr. Cashwell, it would utilize those pods of less than 10 kids, like Dr. Vula pointed out, which is, you know, smaller than we can offer for safety in our classrooms and the sliding scale and the opportunity for these students to have an adult there to help them with virtual learning that we could help provide professional development with. So for me, that's just truly a critical piece. And I appreciate everybody's work to pull that together and meet these needs of our community. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. Mrs. Atkins?
Thank you so much, and thank you, Chris, for all of your work. I do have a transportation question. I'm curious as to, and this may fall on the, more on the Virginia Department of Transportation, so please provide clarification. But are our bus drivers trained as well? I know we have training for staff and potential training for our families, but are we providing training for our bus drivers as well? On a variety of things, on COVID-19, on cleaning. Is that training being offered as well?
Not yet, but we're working to, once we formulate exactly what we're going to do. I mean, as far as cleaning the buses, I mean, that's something that they've already been trained on, doing cleaning their buses. As far as using the PPE and stuff like that, once we determine our path, we will be able to do that. We have purchased some types of sprayers that will spray the bus a lot easier than a regular spray and going down the bus, which takes a lot longer to accomplish. So we have some things in place, but we haven't moved forward until we determine our path.
And is that training provided by Henrico County Public Schools? Or is it provided by VDOT?
It would be provided by Henrico.
Okay, because VDOT, I know have their own separate training as well. So will our bus drivers get training from VDOT in addition to what we provide training? Our training, no. So it's just Henrico County Public Schools training?
Correct.
Okay, fantastic. The second question that I have is around just genuine bus maintenance. You can take COVID aside and pretend it didn't exist. I'm aware that our buses already needed maintenance. And so can you help me understand where we are with our maintenance plan on getting our buses up to snuff?
Well, currently, the county is still working. So they've been working on repairing all the buses for all the backlog of stuff that's been going on that would normally get accomplished over the summer. So they're ahead of the game as far as all the repairs. There are still several buses that are out due to parts not being available and things like that. But of course, if we've got 20-year-old buses out there, parts become a little scarce for some of those that are out there. So they have done a good job of getting all the buses ready. How, you know, how long they will last after they're ready is going to be another story. So being able to break down, we can't predict the break.
To Mr. Ellis's point, we have an aging fleet. And so we had put forth a number of times through our capital improvement plan, some bus replacement cycles that would allow us to have a fleet of newer vehicles. Our repair expenses at times have hovered in, I want to say, is it $9 million? Mr. Pritchard? Right about there. And so because of our aging fleet. And so at some point, you know, trying to weigh how we can look at purchasing new buses into the fleet. And of course, pre-COVID, we had a budget that was newly approved that looked like it was going to help us take a really nice leap forward in our bus replacement cycle. But unfortunately, all of that funding was cut. So I would say we're going to continue to struggle to keep that aging fleet on the road. And we do everything we can to keep them repaired. But that does oftentimes result in delays and double bus runs and some of the things we know inconvenience our families.
And that was a question for me because I know dependent upon, as we get back to a place of what I call Transformation 2020, I won't use that term "new normal" anymore because we certainly are transforming. You know, I had been thinking about the bus aid. I had been thinking about, you know, the buses that my kids are on, and they're the same buses, my oldest is 24. And so I know we have an aging fleet, and I just wanted to sort of stay on top of where we are with that. Because transportation is just as critical in getting our kids to the school.
Correct.
So I want to thank you for sharing that. And I feel a lot better knowing that that's on your radar.
It is. And I've only been there a short time, but one of the first things that I did notice was the age of the fleet and what we were going to do about it. And then being cut was a little hurtful, but I understand.
That was a stab in the chest. So, you know, I can say that for you. And then the second question I have around transportation is the bus aid. Can you talk to me a little bit?
Aid or age?
Aid, A-I-D-E. So the aid that's on, or assistant.
Bus assistant.
Bus assistant, thank you. So I want to use the right term. So for the bus assistant, are they provided the same PPE as well? Or do they bring their own?
Correct, they'll have the face mask. And if they're not able to wear the face mask, they will have the face shield as well to use.
And I would just, I don't want to assume, so please provide guidance. So in my understanding, with the bus aid, them being on the bus, really is just to aid the kids on the bus and making sure they stay in their seats?
But this is more for special needs students, exceptionally needed students, and not the regular school bus, as far as I'm aware.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay. Because that's where I was headed with special education. I wanted to better understand what that looks like.
Students who may have called for additional assistance in their IEPs may be assigned to a bus that has an assistant who's able to attend to whatever the unique needs of the student may be, even beyond supervision.
Right.
Okay, fantastic. Well, that was all of my questions around transportation. And then I also want to ask a couple of questions around childcare. So thank you so much for sharing and your response.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you for getting back up, Dr. Tagen. It's appreciated. My question around childcare services or tutoring, all of the above, is I can appreciate the partnerships that we currently have, you know, Police Athletically, the YMCA, and I believe there are two or three others that have been partners with Henrico County Public Schools for a very long time. I can confidently say that that is not going to be enough. I can also say that it is going to take, as Mrs. Shea already alluded to, that it's going to be a community effort. And I know in my district, something that we're doing is having a call of action where we're getting all of our local community childcare providers. We are getting our virtual assistant, I heard the term "virtual assistant coaches." I've been saying "virtual assistants," but they're the same thing. And I'm wondering, just on a broader scale with just Henrico County Public School systems, we're doing this as a vision, and the vision is to create a list, a booklet. It'll be electronic, it'll be a website, and it'll also be mailed. I think that we have an opportunity to perhaps expand. Now, given all that needs to take place, I don't think that can happen right now. So let me be clear, this isn't a charge to run and do it. This is an opportunity just to think out of the box and really look at community resources outside of our partnerships. And something I know, you know, I think we even talked about this before, perhaps. I think we have to get to that place where I don't know if we're going to move forward with the One Henrico Committee that I proposed. I don't know if we're going to use resources with and Henrico County Public Schools to really look at the resources that are in each community. Because you can Google a whole bunch of daycares. It doesn't necessarily mean that they're adequate. And I think it's going to take individuals and communities that know their community, that know what works. And so, I mean, this is, I'm really hoping, you know, as you do your research and explore, that you really look into pulling in more of the community to help with this community effort. Because it's not a Henrico County Public Schools effort. We are providing this service because we can. But I really want a campaign or some sort of communication to go out about really partnering and working together. And that's not anything for you to respond to. It was just using your listening ear.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's all that I have.
Well, thank you so much, Mrs. Atkins. And for all of your comments and questions concerning that Madam Superintendent, that is the list.
All right. If we, seeing we've answered all questions that you have at this time and you've received a very thorough and long presentation from our leadership team, again, regarding how we've gotten to the recommendation I'm making to this board today, which is that the board approved the 2020-2020 Run Return to School Plan, as I've described it, which is the fully virtual model for the first nine weeks and includes for limited in-person instruction for specific groups of students as we're able to. And so I am asking for the board's approval at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, well, let me start off, I guess, each of us probably make a comment prior to the recommendation that you're going to make. So I will start my comments. I will yield to my vice chairwoman, Mrs. Ogborne. Then I will proceed to my right with Mrs. Consella. Then I will come to my left with Mrs. Shea. Then I will conclude to the left with Mrs. Atkins. I want to first thank everyone who took the time to share their concerns regarding the reopening of our schools. I, like my peers and our superintendent and staff, have received countless emails, phone calls, and posts on social media from the community, providing personal accounts of how our decision as a board will personally affect our students, employees, and our families. Decision on a path forward is challenging. The needs of our children, the public health risks, and the capacities of schools had to be carefully considered. This pandemic has forced us to reimagine our normal lives and stretch beyond our levels of discomfort. It has also shed a bold light on the systematic inequities and implicit biases that exist across the country and also right in our own backyards. There are schools with an HCPS that serve a large number of families impacted by poverty. And many of these students concentrated in eastern Henrico schools are confronted with a myriad of barriers in their homes and community that often impacts their learning. Teaching, learning, and part parenting in a district where poverty is concentrated creates a unique set of challenges and needs that will need to be considered. Since there are schools in the Fayetteville District that are not fully accredited and additional time outside the classroom would likely widen the achievement gap. Many persons have asked some thoughtful questions and raised many valid concerns regarding cleaning and sanitation protocol, PPE provisions, face mask requirements, hazard pay, employment protections, childcare concerns, social and emotional support for the students, provision of supports for IEPs and 504 plans, continuity of gifted and specialty-centered learning, and other budgetary concerns. As a father of two sons who attend schools in HCPS, I understand the emotions that many of the families are experiencing because I am experiencing them myself as a father. My children express their frustrations daily, citing the missocialization, playing with their friends, and even miss seeing and talking to their teachers. I have also been faced with similar concerns related to protecting the safety of a son who is immunocompromised and ensuring that both of my son's learning needs are being adequately addressed during this pandemic. While my ultimate goal and desire is a full return to school, I have to consider all of the available data, feedback, and guidelines received. My decision today is based on the safest return that maximizes opportunities for student learning, considers the social, emotional needs of our children, and maintains the health and safety of all HCS, CPS employees, students, and the community. I yield to Mrs. Ogborne.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. It is our charge to make a very difficult decision. And in our recent survey, I was so gratified to learn that the bulk of the community has their faith and trust in us to do it. And they have their faith and trust in our teachers to do what's right and to meet the needs of our kids. But before, the main thing I really think we need to do is, as a community, we need to stop being divided. We need to come together. We need to get this done, and we need to do it for our kids. And we can, I think we have proven in the past as humans that we can rise to just about any challenge, and we can come together to make the best of a terrible situation that we are all in. If, I said this earlier, if we could get back to normal, believe me, I think we would all rush. I've even had students in the last week said, "I used to hate school, and now I know how much I love it." And they miss it. They do, we all do. We miss going into schools, just like everybody else does. But we need the full cooperation of every employer in this county to work with parents to make this possible and to make it so that parents can get through this and the challenges that they and their children face. They need to be flexible. They need to understand the challenges that parents are facing and have faced all spring. But we also need the parents to work with their friends, their neighbors, their family members, their teachers, to come up with a way forward. And that way forward has to support our kids' learning. We cannot have them stagnant. We cannot have them look back on this time as a time of loss. But we can do this. And I really do know that we can, and we can get the job done for our kids because that's what it's all about. And we're doing, all the work that we all do is for the children of this county. And I know we're up to the challenge. And so really and truly, it is time to stop being divided, and let's move forward together. Ms. Consella?
Well, thank you, Mrs. Ogborne. I do agree with you there that we, the less division we can have. I mean, I was thinking more globally, in One Henrico, if we just all worked together. But I agree with you. In regard to this decision, there aren't metrics, not so much for the decision, but for the weight of the impact of today's decision on our communities. And while we all probably agree, we all want to return to normal, to school on September 8th in person, we must remember these are not normal times. I believe traditional education has changed, and we all must work together to adapt. And quite frankly, that's some of the seeds that we, you know, we're going to make it work. And as to our cornerstones, I can tell you that as a school board member, we heard you. We've talked to you, we've read media. I mean, we have just really, we've heard you, we've read everything, we've listened, we've documented it. And this process has been nothing short of Herculean to bring forth back-to-school solutions that ensure these cornerstones up on these walls, starting with prioritizing safety and wellness first, academic growth, equity and opportunity in relationships. Centered around these cornerstones, supported by volumes of data and feedback are the foundation that support my decision today. I just want to thank every single stakeholder who gave me feedback, whether it was in the Brooklyn District or elsewhere. Thank you so much. Thank you to every single principal who took the time with me this week to really help me understand what I need to advocate for today. And thank you to Dr. Cashwell and our school's leadership team for working nonstop for months. I know someone asked me, "What have you been doing? I haven't seen you." I'm thinking, we have not stopped working. So just thank everyone for brainstorming with the board members, answering questions, helping us to find solutions together to support our four cornerstones as we go back to school one way or the other on September 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Thank you so much, Ms. Consella. Mrs. Shea?
Thank you so much. As many of you know, I have wrestled with this decision because I believe it's my job to wrestle with this decision and all its parts and pieces. I'm not so arrogant as to act on an initial instinct on such a complex decision. Through it all, I prioritized health and safety. But as we heard earlier in our public forum, the word "safety" has become a bit ambiguous and meaning different things to different people during this trying time. So let me approach it practically. people during this trying time. So, let me approach it practically with the things that we learned in our discussion here this afternoon. Instruction in the building isn't going to look normal. And I suggest that what we can offer virtually for the first nine weeks in many ways is more developmentally appropriate, being able to use best practices of education. We learned we do not have the staffing to safely open buildings in a hybrid or five-day model. I shared I've been concerned about the vulnerable communities, the double-working families, single parents, and students whose safety net is school. But there's a solution through our Hef and Community Partnerships childcare with safely-sized pods. And while it doesn't alleviate all of the concerns, it ameliorates the biggest gaps. I've also had concerns that all of our learners can benefit from this learning. And I cannot thank you, express enough thanks for our ESY teachers, summer school teachers, and parents of students in summer school that have spoken with me in the last few days and shared their experience this summer of how well it's going with virtual learning and the amount of student autonomy after the first few hours on the first day. You have encouraged me. The goal of every single person in this room is to get our school kids back to school in a semi-normal setting. And to do that, we need your help, community. We need you to wear your mask. We need you to stop socially gathering. And we need you and all of us to work together, stop antagonizing each other, and support each other in our community so that we can all get our kids back to school, which is our greatest goal. Ms. Atkins?
Well, guys, we're at 6:15. We have all been waiting to get to this point. We all have. Those in this room and those that are watching virtually and those who are at work and when they get home, the first thing they're going to do is find out what the decision is. So, we are at that place. I want to start with saying that public education is a partnership, family, community, and school system. We have to acknowledge the unknown. We don't know what we don't know. We have to embrace change with a positive outlook and work to resolve challenges. It deeply concerns me that some communities spend more energy on name-calling, bullying, finding fault than moving forward with finding solutions. We have great educators, leadership teams. We have the PTA, the PTSA, community partners, volunteers, all in our school system, some with no pay, some with low pay, and definitely long hours all day. We have a fabulous system in here in Henrico County. We love our students. We love our students. We don't like them. We love them because we sacrifice so much for them. I understand concerns. I'm a mom. I'm a wife. I'm a friend. I'm an auntie and probably any other titles you want to think of. But most importantly, sitting in this seat, I'm the school board representative for the Verona District and I'm a history maker for a reason. And I want folks to know that here's the truth. This struggle we're talking about here, it was here way before COVID. This struggle we're talking about, about affordable childcare, was here way before COVID. This struggle that teachers are talking about, about finding creative ways and having the freedom to teach was here way before COVID. And I could go down the laundry list of things that was here before COVID. But here's a silver lining. COVID is providing an opportunity to put a flashlight to gain the eyes and ears on topics that folks didn't want to see and didn't want to hear. And we are here. Our voices are being heard right now. And all of these things aren't going to be resolved in a day. All of these things aren't going to be resolved by Henrico County Public Schools, whether you like it or not, because Henrico County Public Schools didn't create all of them. This is a hands-down, local, state, and federal effort. But I'm going to tell you like this, it's Henrico County Public Schools that provided meals for kids. It's Henrico County Public Schools that provided shelter for homeless kids. I can tell you that because I've talked to two of them. And there's a ton of things that Henrico County Public Schools do, far beyond teaching. And I'm going to tell you something else Henrico County Public Schools do. We put health and safety first. And I didn't mean to preach to all of you in the room and all of you watching virtually, but I will tell you this. Alicia Atkins is sharing her heart. I am not perfect. No one up here is. We have made mistakes in the past. We're going to make them in the future. But the one thing everybody up here on this stage has right is that we love our kids. We push our staff because we believe in our staff. And when doors do open, for those that say, "Hey, you can't prevent somebody from being COVID-positive," you probably can't prevent someone from dying. But what we can prevent is knowing that we did, we know we did everything that we could do to save a life. And that's the difference. And so, as you think about whatever decision and the will of the board is going to be, know that you can be a history maker. Know that you also are leaders and decision-makers. And you have a choice. You have a choice to focus on failure and fault or the future because this is Transformation 2020 and the mission is forward. Chairman Cooper, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogden. Dr. Cashwell, will you please restate your ask, please?
Certainly, Chairman. I am seeking the approval of this board to approve the 2020-2021 Return to School Plan, which includes a fully virtual approach for the first nine weeks, including limited in-person instruction for select groups of students.
Board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion, if that's okay.
Second?
Oh, I haven't made it yet.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the superintendent's plan as proposed to return virtually with those conditions that she has laid out. Now, Ms. Consella?
Second?
The vice chairwoman of the Henrico County School Boards has made the motion. Ms. Consella has seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Are there any nays? The ayes have it. The motion is clear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. And to our community, I, as was stated before, this was not an easy decision or recommendation to make. And I want you to know that we understand the concerns. We understand there's trepidation moving into the new school year in a fully virtual format. And I hope we've demonstrated this afternoon and the presentation that staff gave, as well as the comments you've heard from our incredibly committed board, that we are going to work with our families to address the hurdles however we can. I understand the concerns. We know that any path towards a new school year would have come with tremendous challenge and bumps along the way. But I am inspired by the entire Henrico community and the way we have and will come together in creative and innovative ways in service of our children during this unprecedented and challenging time.